I’m going to call the meeting to order, get a quorum present. Couple of housekeeping, if everyone that’s sitting in these seats this side should have a yellow card. If you’re a non-voter or non-resident, you should be sitting over there. So if you don’t have a card, you can’t be here, you gotta be over there. I have verified that the warrant was posted correctly and timely. I will take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight we have Jeff Blake with us. Normally we have Greg Corbo, but he will be, he’s at a different meeting tonight, so Jeff will be standing in for him. We have Brendan who is up front here, he’s a non-resident, but he speaks on a lot of articles for us. I don’t know if we have any school committee here from, that are non-voters, so they’re allowed?
Non-voting.
Any that are from Manchester? Okay. Do they intend to be here?
She’s not voting.
Okay, so she’s allowed to sit up here, that’s fine, she just can’t vote. The tellers for this evening, in case we have a standing count or secret ballot, will be Karen Gerch, Rob Fitzgibbons, Carla Christensen, Wendy Fossa, Rebecca Jones, and Vicky Cataldo. So if we have to, you’ll bring your card up, up here.
I’ll put it in the center, those other tellers, so that if you vote with these hands, they go beyond.
For secret ballots, what we usually, what we do is, they’ll bring it up to the front, you’ll get an X on it, you’ll get a tab yes or no, and you’ll put your vote in the box and throw the other one away. But I’ll go into more detail if we have to get that to that further on in the meeting. I’d also like to take a moment of silence for some individuals that have passed in the last year. We have Genevieve Guerin. I just found out that Jim Witham passed away, just recently, as in today. And my father also passed away, Sherman Jones, in January. So if we could have a moment of silence for those three individuals? Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And before we start, I usually ask the Finance Committee...
The Speaker has heard enough from us. Just give me a minute to discuss.
Okay. So you normally ask the Finance Committee for their, whether they support the R.R. financial articles, and Ben is going to address that for us right now?
Here, here, here. Hello? Yes? Okay.
The Finance Committee has reviewed and approved all articles on tonight’s warrant. I just want to remind everyone that nearly all of the items we are discussing this evening are capital items and not operating. And I know there can be attendance... Hello? It just went, it’s going on and off. I’ll read that again. I want to remind everyone that nearly all of the items we are discussing this evening are capital items and not operating. And I know there can be attendance, use... Capital items are one-time expenses that do not directly impact the town’s annual operating budget. There are two articles, Articles 3 and 27, that do not impact operating expenses but are one-time adjustments. Each article is funded from either existing reserves or free cash, which is the residual surplus from the close of the prior fiscal year. What this means is that nothing we are discussing will directly impact our tax bill. Order it.
Thank you, Ben. We have some, he’s checking the speaker now, so we’ll get on that. So I guess, do we know if that speaker’s working? We can move to Article 1. I think that’s Alba.
Can you hear me?
I’m going to try to get the number real quick, Ben, I’m recording.
Okay.
I, Elvin Arrow, move that the town vote to amend Section 1.1-1 of the S, of the Town of Essex general bylaws relative to that time, the annual and fall town meeting, by deleting 7:30 p.m. in section and replacing with 6:45 in section.
Is there a second for that motion? Alba, discussion?
Thank you. So, in the 20 years that I’ve been coming here, I’ve been one of the biggest complainers to myself and people around me about 7:30, just too late. And then I find myself, when we have awards or something to give out, I think, oh my God, more time. So, this is the reason I brought it up, I’d like to see what the town has to say, if, you know, 6:45 is amendable. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If you want to talk, if you’re going to, if you’re going to speak to an article, and you know you’re going to, could you step up to the mic, not just you, but anybody? If you’re going to speak to an article, come up to a mic, there’s two here and two here, so we can move things along, so, yes. And you need to state your name, please. Got to flip the switch on.
Elizabeth Eaton, 17 Spring Street. My concern is for people that work and work out of Essex, getting back into town, particularly if you work in the Boston area, getting home and then getting over here in time for a 6:45 meeting to start is pretty tight. So I want people to consider those of us that are coming in, don’t live in town and are not retired, being able to get to meetings.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1, raise your card, please. All those opposed, the motion passes. Article 2.
Does this one work? Hello? Thank you. I, Nicholas Ellas, move that Article 2 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor? It’s postponed.
I, Nicholas Ellas, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 transfer station recycling department budget by increasing trash contract disposal line item from $103,428 to $158,428, sorry, $158,428, and to transfer from free cash to sum of $55,000 to fund said increase for the purpose of purchasing pay-as-you-throw supplies via the town’s bag vendor and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So just, so everybody has a background, the way that it works for us to purchase bags is, we essentially fund them upfront, and then a place like Market Basket goes to our vendor, they purchase the bags, ultimately, we get paid back for this. The reason that this motion is necessary is because there is a fair amount of money based on the purchase of stickers in the last fiscal year that needs to be transferred to this fiscal year. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it’s not an additional cost to the town, it’s just us transferring money from the previous fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Lisa, can you hold on one second? We’re going to have some awards before we get into the zoning. Sorry, Lisa, I know you’re really anxious, but... This one on? It’s not working. No.
Good evening. So this, I’m doing time-served awards for the fire department. When people hear the words “public service” or “public servants,” our first thoughts are elected officials, people who run for office with the expectation that they will serve their term and accomplish a few things during that term, and then move on, knowing that they did their part to make the community better. But when we think of individuals who serve on our fire department, it’s much more than that. For the past 35 years, for Jason Heath, 35 years for Travis Good, and 40 years for Ernie Nieberly, they’ve given countless hours away from their families to keep our families safe, hours responding to calls in the middle of the night when the rest of us are asleep on the holidays, when we’re resting and relaxing. This isn’t an elected position that they ran for, it’s something that is in their blood, it’s in their hearts, and when they’ve been, and something they’ve been called to do. For that, we are eternally grateful, and I’d like to recognize Travis, Jason, and Ernie.
You gentlemen can stand up if you want to, so we can recognize you, that would be good.
Got it. Dottie Elwell has worked in the treasure collector’s office for 35 years. Just to add some context to that, when she showed up for work on her first day back in 1988, Mass. Governor Mike Dukakis was running for president, the Red Sox had not won a World Series in 70 years, the Patriots had not yet won the Super Bowl, computers were still using 5 1/4 inch floppy disks. Obviously, the world has seen a lot of change over the last 35 years, but one amazing thing has remained constant over that time, and that’s Dottie’s presence at Town Hall. For most of those years, she was on the first floor and likely your first contact at Town Hall, always there with a smile and the knowledge to help you with your issue and point you in the right direction. Even after the Town Hall renovation moved her to the second floor, plenty of folks still make Dottie their first stop, even if it’s just to say hello. While Dottie is great at serving the public, most residents don’t truly understand how valuable she is to the town. She brings so much historical knowledge to the job. She is an invaluable resource to all of her coworkers. On top of all that, she brings the old-school Yankee work ethic, a near-perfect attention to detail and a calming presence with her work each day. There have been four different treasure collectors during her tenure at Town Hall, and each one of them would tell you that she is the key ingredient to keep the office running efficiently and accurately. For all of the wonderful attributes she brings to Town Hall every day, it is my honor to recognize Dottie Elwell for 35 years of amazing service to our town.
Testing Tess.
The Town of Essex is fortunate to have many dedicated employees, and each year, we honor one of them for their exemplary service to the town. In most years, we recognize full-time employee, but the town has a number of part-time employees doing important work that largely goes unrecognized by the general public. This year’s recipient of the Employee of the Year award has actually worked for the town in both classes. Brooke Friedrich has worked for the town for over 15 years, spending most of that time as a part-time assistant in the accounting department before accepting her role as the treasure collector years ago. The part-time role in the accounting department can be difficult. Ideally, you would find someone with strong accounting skills who could work independently on several projects at once. At the same time, you’d need someone who is willing to work for only a few hours a week. As luck would have it, there was a resident who checked all of those boxes and more. Brooke thrived in this role, doing excellent work and taking on more responsibilities over time. She did all the behind-the-scenes work that kept the accounting department running smoothly. In 2021, the town asked her to take on the new challenge and move into the full-time role as treasure collector. After some careful consideration, she accepted this new challenge. She hit the ground running and has worked hard to get up to speed quickly. The treasure collector wears many hats, from collecting taxes to investing funds and handling payroll and benefits. The job requires someone with great attention to detail and the ability to multitask. On top of that, it helps to have great communication skills at work and with residents and town employees on various issues. On a daily basis, Brooke displays all of these attributes and has been a great addition to the full-time staff at Town Hall. While her technical skills are top-notch, what sets Brooke apart is her attitude that she brings to work each day, her positivity and spirit of collaboration, interaction with her office, a better experience. We couldn’t be happier that she accepted the new role at Town Hall, and we appreciate all that she does for the residents of Essex. Congratulations, Brooke. As many of the people in Essex, Dan Mayer has gone above and beyond doing great things for the community of Essex and Cape Town in general. For many years now. He has very generously contributed funding for equipment for both the Essex Fire Department and the Essex Police Department when the need has arisen. When the fire department needed equipment, equipment, Dan quickly provided it without most people even knowing that this has happened. The same is true for the police department. As an example, when the police needed a temporary office, Dan was there to provide a temporary portable office behind the old police and fire station without any cost to the town. Dan contributes, Dan’s contributions have been endless and generally not recognized publicly. Dan is a very private person, especially about his generosity. He wants to help people out when he can. The replacement of the Folsom Pavilion at the Centennial Grove is another example of his dedication to help. Here, Dan saw a need to replace the pavilion and developed a plan to help build a new one for Essex. He’s donated materials and labor needed to build the new pavilion and is now starting to gather the Essex community together in an effort to have everyone in Essex help build and raise the funding for the build for the good of the town. Dan is a man who has developed this successful business and who wants to give back to the Essex community in the best way that he can without a lot of fanfare. At the core, Dan wants to help wherever he can and is very silent in the way he takes credit for any of this help. Please join me in recognizing Dan Mayer as Volunteer of the Year.
Y’all sat? Okay, Lisa, I think you’re up. Article number four.
Working. Whoop, yep, it does. I, Lisa O’Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex zoning bylaw to add a new general use district, section... I thought it was, okay. I, Lisa O’Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex...
Tess, Tess.
Thank you. I, Lisa O’Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex zoning bylaw to add a new general use zoning district, section 6-3.3.4, and to make other associated changes as shown in Article 4 of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant with the following minor change: delete the first sentence of proposed section 6-3.3.4.3 establishment, which references the official zoning map of the Town of Essex, so that the section reads, “At the time of establishment of this district, it includes all the land within the boundaries of the town that are not in one of the districts established in sections 6-3.1, 3.3.1, 6-3.3.2, or 6-3.3.3,” with no reference to the zoning map. So just briefly, a little background on zoning districts in Essex. Historically, Essex has not had any zoning districts, and all uses that are allowed in the bylaw have been permitted anywhere and everywhere in town. And that’s the case today, with the exception of three zoning districts that have been established in recent years. And those are the Southern Canoma Point Zoning District, the Central Canoma Point Zoning District, which were established to sell properties at Canoma Point, and then most recently, the Essex Downtown Zoning District, which comprises most of Main Street, and that was established a couple of years ago. Together, those three small districts that we have established comprise about 2% of the land area in Essex. The remainder of the property in Essex remains undistricted, but all uses are allowed anywhere, and that has been the case historically. What this article is looking to do is to take the remainder of land in Essex and formalize a general use district. This district changes absolutely nothing about any regulations regarding land or building use or any dimensional standards. It is to be consistent with the revised format of the bylaw, where three existing districts have their own subsections in section 6-3 for zoning districts. And the regulation and standards that have always applied to everything in town will still apply to everything in town, but will now be found in the bylaw in a section for a general use district. So this really is a formatting housekeeping procedure. This is simply reformatting the information and making it clear, but changes nothing else. Pages 2 to 6 in the warrant provide the detail for the new district, which will be part of the bylaw, and pages 6 through 9 include the information in other sections that is updated or deleted to reflect the addition of the new section for the general use district. So again, this changes nothing about how properties are regulated or dimensional standards or anything in town, it simply formalizes the 98% of town that is undistricted as the general use district so that it can be treated consistently in our reformatted bylaw. Sorry, it’s a lot, but it’s really, it’s really a nothing sort of article, and again, it’s just formatting and housekeeping. Yes, I’m sorry, I forgot, my most important job as Chair of the Planning Board was to report to you that the Planning Board held the duly required hearing last Wednesday, November 18th, and on this article, the seven members of the Planning Board voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Lisa. This requires two-thirds, as does all zoning bylaws. So, all those in favor of Article 4, raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds. Article 5.
I, Lisa O’Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex zoning bylaw, section 6-10.7, site plan review as shown in Article 5 of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant. Again, performing my duty as Planning Board Chair, I will report that the Planning Board considered this article as well in the hearing on November 18th, and all seven members voted unanimously to support this article.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I was just, I was just getting warmed up. Okay, so this article proposes some updates to the existing site plan review requirements, and I want to be very clear about what changes and what does not change. First, the section with the types of projects requiring a site plan review is expanded to include single and two-family dwellings that have an aggregate ground floor footprint of 4,000 square feet or more, while all other single and two-family dwellings are still exempt. They’ve always, single and two-family has always been exempt, and they will continue to be exempt unless the ground floor aggregate footprint is greater than 4,000 square feet. Second, site plan review is typically required for any use that requires a special permit because of other project characteristics that would trigger this, but a line is added to the revised portion of the bylaw that makes it clear that site plan review is required in addition to the special permit, since it always has been, but without being explicitly stated. So adding this line states it explicitly so that it’s clear. Third, a new type of project to require a site plan review is one that adds three or more parking spots. The intent here is to try and capture projects that may not be building projects but could be reconfigurations of a property or a site. Next, the evaluation criteria that the Planning Board uses to complete a site plan review are updated with some minor clarifications, and there are also new categories for lighting, signage, and waste and wastewater systems to be part of the site plan review. These are added to ensure that applicants are aware of the criteria that the Planning Board will consider. Finally, projects continuing the same use are differentiated from projects that propose a change of use. Because of the way zoning is in Essex, where any type of use is permitted on any property in the general use district, which is the way it’s always been, the change of use of a property or a building requires a building permit application, and the building permit application will trigger a site plan review. So change of use has always required a site plan review, but the requirement that’s being added by the amendments in this site plan review section are that there would be, need to be a public hearing with a better notification for that hearing. Site plan review does not give the Planning Board the right to deny a project only to condition it, so the proposed public hearing requirement would simply provide an opportunity for a neighborhood to understand changes that are being proposed and to have an opportunity for public comment prior to the Planning Board completing the site plan review. So those are the changes that are being proposed in the site plan review requirements.
Lisa, can you verify the hearing date that was, had, what was the date of the hearing? I didn’t get...
The date of the hearing was November 18th, Wednesday, November...
How about maybe the 8th?
Hmm?
The 8th? Or the 18th?
18th.
8. The 8th. November eighth.
November 18th was my mother's birthday, sorry. It was the eighth. The eighth was the date of the hearing. Last Wednesday.
Any other, any other discussion? This also, again, two-thirds vote. All those in favor of article five, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article six.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex zoning bylaw, section six dash two point two, definitions as shown in article six of the Fall Town Meeting warrant. Of course. So the planning board held a hearing on Wednesday, November 8th, and the seven members of the planning board voted unanimously to support this article. The changes that are being proposed to definitions are all listed in the warrant. I will try and buzz through them briefly. There are a couple, there are some definitions that are added, some that are modified, and some that just have some minor clarifications. So accessory, and, and typically like where accessory building, you can see that the original definition is crossed out, and there's a new definition in boldface. So it's just a clearer definition of accessory building. It doesn't change anything about what an accessory building is. It just makes the wording and the language clearer. Then we added the definitions for attic and basement. Buildable lot area was just added to clarify that it wasn't building area, but it was the buildable area of a lot. Certificate of occupancy is defined. Family is defined, redefined to include people that are not necessarily related by blood or marriage but do form a housekeeping unit. Home occupation definition has also been clarified. Hotel motel is a use that's always been in our bylaw, and that is added. Impervious surface coverage is a definition that's used in the bylaw, and that's added. The definition for a lot has been streamlined and clarified. Lot area and lot building coverage are terms that are used in the bylaw, so definitions are added. Mixed use is now defined further down as mixed use structure and mixed use lot, whereas we just used to have mixed use. So we've clarified that by separating those definitions. Multi-family dwelling and single family just send you to where dwellings are defined. Special permits have always been in our bylaw, but this adds a definition to explain what they are. Half-story is defined because it's referred to in the bylaw, but hadn't been defined. So the mixed use lot, mixed use structure are separately defined. And then the definition for variance is clarified, as is the definition for zoning map.
Any further discussion? This also requires a two-thirds. All those in favor of art-, article six, raise your hand. Do you have a discussion or a point of order? Okay. I'm going to state this again. If, if you want to discuss an article, it makes it easier for me if you're already at a mic, not raising your hand when I'm calling for a vote. So if you have a question, go ahead.
How? Yeah, it's okay. Sorry, Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. Question on how this affects boarding houses. There's a discussion in family about boarding houses. If somebody could explain that, because the family, the family clause seems to talk about it, but it's not clear. If that could be clarified.
We're clear on that. Well, the, the bylaw does not have any regulations around boarding houses. We don't regulate those, but in the definition of family, we are very clear to have added that it's any number of persons living together as a single economic and/or a housekeeping unit and ordinarily using a single cooking facility, including domestic or medical assistance, but excluding tenants or boarders. So tenants and boarders are not family.
Any further discussion? Yep.
Since we have articles nine and 10 that discuss short-term rentals, does this definition of hotel motel include short-term rental units, and how do we distinguish them?
Mr. Zubricki?
Help. So a hotel, the hotel motel tax encompasses both hotels, motels, and short-term rentals. But your question is, does the planning board's definition of a hotel motel include short-term rental? I don't think so.
I, I don't think it does. It's, it's hotel motel. It's a building in which temporary lodging is offered for compensation with or without associated amenities. Right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of article six, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article seven.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the Town of Essex zoning bylaws by revising section six dash seven point six point one point two to extend the moratorium on business and industrial conversions as shown in article seven of the Fall Town Meeting warrant. Yep. This article is asking to extend the moratorium for one more year, which will take us beyond the end of the work with MAPC on the byla-, the zoning bylaw update project. Right now, the project will extend through June of 2024. The moratorium is set up differently this time in that it can be lifted by the planning board after a public hearing. Our goal is to bring more effective protections for residential areas to annual town meeting in May and hopefully lift the moratorium thereafter. With respect to the moratorium, I want to point out a few things that it is not and what it does not do. It does not restrict any businesses or business or industrial uses on properties or in buildings that are already used for those purposes. It does not apply at all to the downtown district where many of our businesses are concentrated. It does not restrict home occupations at all. Other people may suggest and tell you that this moratorium is anti-business or unfriendly to business, but in every other town or city in Massachusetts where there are commercial districts, businesses flourish in those areas that are set aside for them. We just want a chance to explore where these are appropriate areas in Essex. Looking at this from the other perspective, it could be considered anti-homeowner or unfriendly to neighborhoods to allow commercial enterprises anywhere in town. No other city or town in this half of the state exposes residential neighborhoods to this risk. Essex is the only town without residential zoning districts in the eastern half of the state, and it is one of five in a state with 351 towns and municipalities, and the other four are in the Berkshires. Not having residential zoning districts or having any kind of use-based districts designated commercial, industrial, or otherwise does not make a special or unique. It disregards the wishes of people who live here and want to be able to live in residential areas, as well as businesses who also want to know the areas where they are welcomed. People may say that businesses haven't been a problem throughout town, and those of us who have served on certain boards know that occasionally, it has been a problem where businesses are in residential neighborhoods. Years ago, when residents opened their own businesses on their properties, it may have been less problematic, but that's no longer the case. We hear time and again that people don't want Essex to change and want it to keep its small-town character, but please remember that if you want something to stay the same, you need to protect it. There is land pressure in every community around us, and we are more vulnerable than they are. It's only our lack of sewerage that's keeping development out of town. The moratorium gives us a bit more time with MAPC guidance to find ways to protect the small-town Essex that we all love. I'm sorry. I apologize. So yes, the planning board also considered this article in the hearing that we had last Wednesday, the eighth of November, and this article was supported by a vote of six to one.
Any further discussion? Come up to a mic, please.
I'm just curious if this is going to- Peter Marshall, A.L. Ben Road. I'm just wondering if this is going to preclude anybody from having lobster traps in the yard, clam skiffs in the yard, blue collar things that we all grew up in this town doing. You can't hear me? Okay. So I'm thinking, I'm wondering if this is going to preclude people from their clam skiffs, their, their lobster traps, their, their businesses running out of their yard the way we always have in this town forever, because this is a blue town, blue-collar town, you know? And is that going to change anything?
No, it, it doesn't. Those, people keeping their, they're considered home occupations when you're keeping the equipment that you use to run your business in your yard. That's home occupation. That's not running a business. So home occupations have always been allowed everywhere in Essex. Home occupations are not precluded in the moratorium, as I mentioned.
Further discussion? Also two-thirds. So all those in favor of article seven, raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds. Article eight.
I, Peter, I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise for general per-, general municipal purposes, which purposes may include public roads, wetland replication, drainage, slopes, grading, erosion control, and other related uses, all associated with the Apple Street roadbed elevation and culvert replacement project easements over certain real property described in article eight of the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 for this, for such acquisitions and further to authorize the selectmen to execute any and all instruments necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Discussion, Peter?
Yeah. So in just a minute, Town Administrator Zubricki is going to be giving a short presentation on the details of this project, but before he does, I want to say that first and foremost, this is a public safety project. These small slivers of property along the edge of the roadway where potential flooding occurs are crucial to this pro-, in accomplishing this project. The project itself is crucial to providing nearly 40% of Essex residents on the eastern side of town to local emergency services in a timely manner when need is most critical. As climate change, sea level rise, and the associated flooding rapidly approach, it is imperative that this project be completed now while the funding is available and the need is starting to ramp up. Brendan?
We get into discussion. I believe Brendan's got a presentation, and then we'll go to the discussion, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What I would like to do is go through some things that we've heard. We've had a lot of questions from the public. A lot of comments have been made about the project. I'm going to go through some of those things, and then I'm going to go to a short presentation. One of the questions we get is, how is this, how was this project selected out of all the other needs that the town is facing? There are several reasons for that. First, all communities in Massachusetts were encouraged to develop a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, also known as an MVP plan, which Essex completed in 2018. Without such a plan, a community is not allowed to apply for a variety of climate change-related mitigation grants. The Apple Street project was a high priority on that plan. Also, all communities which want to partake in certain federal grant programs are required to develop a federal hazard mitigation plan. Essex's first plan was completed in 2012, when climate change was not really in the forefront. In 2019, when that plan was updated, climate change was a much larger feature, and the Apple Street project was added to the town's plan. Both of these processes involve consultation with experts and will replete with public participation opportunities. Most recently, in September of 2023, a local climate change interest group known as Town Green, they're a K-PAN group, hosted a webinar featuring experts from both Harvard and MIT, and it was plain to see how important the Apple Street project is to the future of public safety in Essex. Since 2018, the town has received a total of four state grants to get us through final design and permitting, which we are almost done with, the permitting. Presently, since the Essex Conservation Commission's approval of the project was appealed to the Department of Environmental Protection, we still don't have clarity on our final permitting status. Two major permitting pathways are on hold while the town meeting again considers taking easements, what's before you tonight, since both paths, pathways require evidence that the project proponent, that being the town, has control over the necessary areas. Why is this proposal coming back before town meeting? In May, there was discussion suggesting that voting for these specific easements could also allow the selectmen to take other easements without coming back to town meeting. That's not the case. What's before you is these specific easements, which I'm going to be showing. In May, there was discussion that suggested that the amount of money that our professional appraiser came to for compensation concerning these relatively small easements is vastly below fair market value, since the value of each property as a whole is much higher than that. While it is true that buildable parcels on Apple Street are indeed very valuable, the value of an easement along the roadside over land that generally cannot be used for building or even ancillary use is not very high at all. What the town has to offer with respect to any type of taking is fair market value, and the town has utilized a highly qualified appraiser to arrive at the values. Even though town officials described the project back in May, sometimes a visual presentation, which I'll offer tonight, provides more insight and conveys more overall, overall understanding. Also, a comment was made recently that the presentation of the article should have been more detailed back in May. That's a fair point, and that's another reason why we're going to be providing this information tonight. So a question. What is the total percentage of the overall area of the six properties in question that is proposed for easement taken by the town? The total lot area of the six lots on which easements are proposed combined is about 980,000 square feet. Temporary construction easements, which dissolve after the project is completed, is about 14,000 square feet, or about 1.4% of the total area of the six parcels. Permanent easements for roadside slope and drainage amount to about 17,500 square feet, or about 1.8% of the area of the six parcels. And again, permanent easement area is generally comprised of wetlands and/or steep slopes that cannot be used for any substantive purpose. What if the predictions about future flooding are wrong? No one knows for sure whether the predictions are too high, too low, or just right. However, the town has a chance right now to modify 850 feet of roadway without spending local money on the construction project. This opportunity will wane once some other roadway retreat projects get funded. Once, one way this project can be brought, thought of, is an insurance policy against the flooding problem with critical public safety implications, which is what Selectman Fippen talked about, without spending local money. True, state and federal grants will come from your state and federal taxes, but if Essex does not get that money, some other town will. I wanted to address a few other things we've seen. A flyer was sent around suggesting that Apple Street will be turned into some stark highway along the 850 feet in the project area. A photo was included in that flyer to try and illustrate that. I'm going to show you something different tonight. The flyer suggests that there be some type of oversized roadway, that there will be some type of oversized roadway constructed in the project area. In actuality, the paved surface will be widened by one foot on either side. It's currently 18 feet. It's going to 20 feet. Yes, there will be shoulders with guardrails and side slopes, since the roadbed is proposed for elevation, but if you look at the roadway today, there are shoulders and side slopes- But if you look at the roadway today, there are shoulders and side slopes and old stone walls toppled into the wetlands. The current total impact, if you look anywhere in this project, and I showed it during a site visit, is about 40 feet before we even do anything. The flyer suggests that less costly and less environmentally destructive solutions exist that would not require land takings. With respect to cost, that is true. However, since the town is attempting to fund this project with federal and state grants, there is a minimum cost benefit threshold that has to be met. While some say that means overdesigning the project, which is not anything I've ever said, rather, the project is being designed to meet all requirements of funding agencies, with federal requirements being the most stringent. If some lower cost solution is chosen, it'll very likely not meet the funding threshold for the grants. So if you choose one of those solutions, you would pay likely 100% of the project, versus going with a higher cost solution that can completely be grant funded. With respect to environmental responsibility, the project will remove an undersized culvert under the roadway and add a 10-foot box bridge, which I'm gonna show a picture of, that meets mass stream crossing standards. These standards are in place to improve ecological value of the stream crossing, not worsen it. Also, the project will actually end up with a higher, larger area of higher quality wetlands than the wetlands that are in place today. The flyer that was distributed suggests that there will be lawsuits over the value of the takings that the taxpayer will have to foot the bill for. While it is true that such lawsuits might get filed, the value of the roadside easements can only be argued to be so high. The flyer also suggests that a portion of the project might not be covered by grants. The project costs will be reevaluated at grant application time, and any adjustments that are necessary will be made. Essex has a very good track record in bringing major projects in at or below budget. The flyer talks about an existing speeding problem on Apple Street. Correct, the problem already exists. Widening the paved surface by one foot on each travel lane for 850 feet will not likely translate to anything worse than what is already happening. There are people who use Apple Street now who will continue to use it after the project. There are also those who prefer to drive around now, and they will not probably be enticed to change that habit, just because a very small portion of the roadway gets improved. People have talked about Essex Causeway on Route 133 as the place to focus instead of Apple Street. However, the Mass DOT has simply not been willing to take on an elevation project there due to the implications it would have for businesses that flank that roadway. The project is on a scenic road, so how can it even be proposed? The scenic road statute is not designed to prevent communities from making improvements over time. Instead, the statute absolutely allows for this, so long as the planning board agrees after a public process is undertaken. In addition to being a scenic road, Apple Street is described as a public highway forever, a term that was used when the Essex County Commissioners formally laid out the road right of way many years ago. Trees will be removed. This is correct, and we have been upfront about that from the very beginning. We've also developed a complete replanting plan, and the trees will grow back relatively quickly. Also, even with trees coming down, there is generally a backdrop, a backdrop behind the roadside trees that consists of a much denser grouping of trees. And finally, we can live with occasional flooding. Unfortunately, every time a roadway has an episode of high groundwater in its vicinity, even if the roadway itself is not overtopped, the underlying structure is weakened, and the hot top itself begins to degrade. Sometimes there are even sudden road washouts that occur after a particular area has been repeatedly degraded under the surface. Now, I'm gonna move to the video presentation. If we could get the lights, please? Better get, here we go, alright. So I just want to point out that we have a variety of project partners here. Ipswich Watershed Association helped us with the stream crossing part of the project. That is also the case with the DER. Coastal Zone Management helped us with a feasibility study. The MVP Action Grant, which is out of the governor's office, is the grant that we're currently discharging right now, which was for final design and permitting. And we've gotten support from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. With respect to the issue, the problem begins with the causeway flooding. And we do get storm surges and also at astronomically high tides. The Department of Transportation, Massachusetts, is not increasing the height of the roadway. That was true when we did the distant part of the roadway. Go to the next slide. True when they put in this new bridge, which is a 50-year design. The reason that they're not doing that is because they're concerned that if they raise the roadway high enough where it will be out of the flood, it will basically decimate the businesses on either side of the roadway. So, Apple Street also floods, and here's that 850 feet that I was talking about. This is Southern Avenue. All the way over here is Western Avenue. And the road comes down a hill and then rises out of the floodplain at the end of that 850 feet. There's a substandard stream crossing there, too. Go ahead, next slide. So what is the issue? Well, the blue route is if you were just going over the causeway. The green route is what happens if you have to take Apple Street if that's still open, but the causeway is flooded. The red route is what happens when both Apple Street and the causeway are flooded. You can see that introduces quite a problem for our emergency responders. Next slide. About 43% of the people of this town live on the other side of the flood. You know that our public safety facility is on the town hall side, if you will, or the Ipswich side of the flood. That's roughly the area of the causeway that floods. This shot was taken when we had one of those astronomically high tides. You can see, you had a blue sky day, there was no wind. It just happened to be one of the highest tides of the year. You can see that this is, looks like an island. This is going to be, sea level rise is predicted to put even more on top of these, and the flooding is predicted to become more and more common, along with flooding that comes from more frequent, more severe storms. Next slide. So with respect to the numbers so far, the DER, that's the environmental arm of this, grant for $41,000, and then a follow-up grant for $83,000. The CZM grant was $27,000, and the MVP grant, $222,000. So so far on this project, since 2018, we've gotten $373,869 in grants. The town meeting put up $80,000. That's 1.8% of the cost of getting to final design and permitting. That's not a bad figure at all. With respect to implement the construction of the project, we're either going to get 75% from the federal government or 90% from the federal government. We don't know which one yet, because we applied for the 90% funding, but then the Hawaii fires occurred, and the review of the 90% funded projects was put on hold. That logjam is clearing now, but we're told by NEMA, who submits on our behalf to FEMA, that if we don't make the 90% funding, we will be put in the 75%, which is the usual allotted funding. The 90% came as a result of the COVID crisis. If we get 75% federal funding, we will go for 25% state funding through the MVP program. If we get 90% federal funding, we'll go through, or 10% MVP funding. Getting 25 or 10% from the state for the rest of the project should be a fairly easy situation, because they're leveraging huge federal dollars. And then with respect to the total outlay, if this whole thing gets funded to construction, you look at the figure from up top, the $373, the figure that we would get in grants, the $80,000 the town has put into it, and that would be a total of 1.6% of a $4.5 million project will have been funded by the town. The rest of it would be from state and federal grants. Next slide. Now I'm going to go into exactly what the easements look like. This is the entire area. We have one, two, three, four, five, six parcels that we're seeking easements on. We're gonna now go through each one. Parcel one, go ahead. Go to the next one, please. Uh, let's see. Yeah, I'm sorry. Parcel one is here. Hard to see, but it's a fairly big parcel. I told you the statistic about total area versus total easement area. And go to the next slide, please. This is what it looks like along that frontage. The red dots represent trees that are proposed to be removed. The green line represents where our limit of work will probably come, and the green dots represent trees that will stay in place. Please notice that, you'll be seeing this throughout the slides, there's already an impact from the paved surface, the shoulder, and the slope, side slope, that's in the project today, will be just becoming up higher and coming over and down. Next, please. This is parcel two, and the easement is simply this green along the road here versus the much wider expanse of the parcel. We'll now take a look at, closer look at those photos. Go ahead, next. So you can see, again, this is what's there today. There's already a fairly wide corridor, if you will, that is associated with this road. Again, the green line is our limit of work. The red dots are trees that are going to be proposed to be coming down. Here's another view of that. Next, please. This is parcel three, and I wish it showed up better, but it's just this little sliver. When I get to the real easement documents, you'll see them better. Next, please. Similar thing. There are trees coming down. We've never said that there aren't trees coming down or proposed to come down. But there is also a lot of other trees behind those trees, and there's already quite a corridor that this road, it's in. Next, please. Parcel four, the easement is this area right up by the road. Next. Similar situation. Next. Parcel five is this little area here. Next. And again, trying to show you where our limit of work will be versus what the area already looks like and some trees that might come down. Next. Parcel six is this area here. Next. In another view. Next slide, please. So now, these are the various parcels. These are the easement documents that are referenced in your town meeting warrant. I tried to show you with those photos how large the parcels were. Now we're just looking at a zoom in on the road in certain sections and the easements that are being sought along the road. And remember, we're not, the town is not even looking for fee simple here. The town is looking for easements over these properties. The town is not preventing any of these owners from utilizing the property in any way that they could now. We just need the permanent, the permanent easements to stay in place, because if we put a roadside slope in, that can't be changed in the future. Next, please. Here's another one of the lots. Again, everything is up by the road. Next. Another one. Next. You can see that one's here. Next. And the permit is here. Next. And here. Slivers along the road, as Selectman Fippen said. Think that's it? There another? Oh, okay. If we could have the lights, please?
Further discussion? I believe you were at the mic first. Go. Speaker?
How about now? Great. Hi, it's Gene Cornfield, 128 Apple Street. What's changed in this article since we overwhelmingly voted it down several months ago?
The article is exactly the same.
So since we voted against it by a large majority, and also voted then not to reconsider it, why are we reconsidering it?
Mr. Moderator, may I answer? Because as I mentioned in my opening remarks, there were several reasons why the selectmen felt that it would be good to make sure everybody had a very clear picture of what was being proposed, and I covered that early in my presentation. You want me to repeat those reasons?
No, but I do think the pictures were very telling, and I hope everyone noticed that every place up until those green lines would be gone. Those little slivers of easement on either side of the road, all of a sudden would be no trees, replaced with either pavement, guardrail, or crushed rock. And it's nice to hear that you have a replanting plan for all of these trees, but any of us who have seen crushed rock know that trees don't grow in crushed rock. Weeds grow in crushed rock.
Mr. Moderator, I have other graphics if you'd like me to show what we are proposing, if that's instructive to the town meeting.
Was that proposed, has that already been in the public, those graphics? Have we seen the graphics already?
No, I brought additional materials in case detailed questions like this came up.
Someone asked him a question, asked a question that he is answering. That's what's happening right now. I haven't allowed it yet. I'm not gonna allow it right now, Brendan. So do you have another question?
I'd like to say, I'd like to say something for everyone to consider, because I think we would all agree that public safety has to be a top priority for all of us. But as Mr. Zubricki said, this is not the only solution. In fact, it's a much larger solution that is necessary. It's just that whatever the other solutions might be, we would have to pay for. So I ask everyone just considers this. The natural beauty that we all have the privilege of enjoying was here long before any people arrived, long before there was any town called Essex. But where so many other towns have traded natural beauty for strip malls and subdivisions, highways and high rises, we still enjoy what makes Essex special for one reason: its people. We should be grateful for their generations of stewardship and be mindful that we have inherited their role. In 1973, the people of Essex voted to make Apple Street a scenic road. Do we not owe it to them to respect that vote? This past May, the people of Essex, that's us, voted by a large majority against taking neighbors' property under eminent domain. Do our town officials not owe it to us to respect that vote? Or to respect State Department of Environmental Protection and Mass Environmental Policy Act criteria that mandate the least environmentally impactful alternative? This project, as proposed, is practically the most environmentally impactful. So the question, why have our town officials appeared so tied to this overbuilt, overpriced design that would remove 100 trees, require taking people's private property, and forever replace Apple Street's character with the appearance of a mass pike off-ramp? They say for public safety, which is of course crucial. But overwidening the street on this plan would encourage faster driving, just as it did when the other end of Apple was widened. This would reduce public safety every single day in exchange for a possible someday with less than a 1% likelihood of happening. Our town administrator has said that this project had to be purposely over-engineered in order to qualify for federal funding. That means that all these negative impacts aren't necessary to address the actual flood risk. They're collateral damage necessary to access money. We're being asked to sacrifice 100 trees and accept permanent disfigurement of our scenic road. We're being asked to compromise the will of Essex voters and to compromise DEP and MEPA environmental mandates. We're being asked to compromise everyday public safety and to compromise the sanctity of private property. Is compromising all those things to access grant money stewardship? No. I call it selling out. The only reason this article exists, to take private property, is to accommodate the overly large, overly damaging, and overpriced design. Let's be stewards of the Essex we inherited and consider less extreme, less expensive solutions that aren't as damaging, don't require taking private property, and still ensure we address the risks of flooding. At least we should know what those other solutions would cost, so we can decide whether it's something for which we want to pay, or if going with this much more overbuilt solution is our only option. Thank you.
I think you were standing up second, but I don't, if you got, you wanna? Go ahead.
Thank you. Janet Carlson, 24, Apple. It's time. Talk about the elephant in this room. It didn't just show up. It didn't just show up. Can everybody hear me? It didn't show up tonight. It's been here a while. Time to name it. Residents, my fellow voters, we are the legislative body of this town. It's not like we just advise the Board of Selectmen with our vote, tell them what to do. We already told the selectmen what to do with this article. Last May, we understood it fine, and we said no by a huge majority. I know I'm not alone when I say frankly, I feel talked down to with this notion that visuals will help us understand better, like we're second graders and we need pictures. Last May, after rejecting this same article, we also voted against the possibility of reconsidering our vote. Maybe that doesn't apply tonight technically, but it sure applies in terms of intent. Told our selectmen that we don't want to reconsider this article. Period. End of story. And yet, here we are. And that's the elephant in the room. In what other towns across this country is it okay to ignore the will of the voters? Let this be the last time they bring this article back to town meeting. That's the first reason to vote no. Here are two more. We are going to consider many other expenditures this evening, and you may be aware that we need plenty of money left after tonight for town meeting next May, when we have unavoidable costs coming for the Manchester Essex School, not to mention renovation of the elementary school. That's coming too. There are real costs for all of us embedded in this proposed destruction of a beautiful scenic road for no demonstrated reason. This highway exit ramp design will cost in your tax bill. Even aside from grants, which are taxpayer dollars, the cost of the land itself will land on our wallets. And you can be sure it won't be $8,000, but likely many times that amount. Then there's the cost of the town's legal defense when the abudders lawsuits are filed. Grants won't cover lawsuits. What about when the construction costs exceed the grant? Is a real cost that haven't been properly acknowledged or explained so far. Reason number three: Apple Street doesn't flood. Notice tons of photos of the causeway underwater and the Evans Creek culvert. No photos of Apple Street. That's because it's only flooded two to three times in the past 50 years. And until 2050, that, sorry, the mic. Until 2050, that short low spot at the Southern Avenue end of Apple has a less than 1% annual chance of flooding for two to three hours with high tide or storm surge. To put that in perspective, the causeway and Eastern Avenue risks are at least 20 times that, 20% and 30%. The town green experts mentioned by Mr. Zubriki said that the causeway is the critical area of focus. In 2030, six short years from now, the coastal flood map predictions are that the memorial fields will be underwater. Main Street will be flooded, including near the gas station where a gas spill could contaminate the area. Eastern Avenue flooded, parts of Kanomo flooded, but not Apple Street. We should be focused on the entire community and the flooding we face in the immediate.
You have 30 seconds.
The long term is less urgent, but certainly needs discussion. We should think about clever solutions because come 2070, Apple Street may flood for a few hours, but by then Essex may have turned into a group of islands. Actual circumstances on Apple Street don't warrant a project this size. I'm not saying do nothing. I'm not saying do no planning. I'm saying not this overly destructive, unnecessary project, not this per costly design, and not this abuse of the purpose of eminent domain.
Time is up.
Angus Bruce, 51, Pond Street. I don't live on Apple Street, but I drive on it a lot. It is scenic. I think these pictures are deceiving. I'm in the construction business. What they failed to show is how high they were going to build. Can you tell me how high that culvert you're putting in is?
The crown of the road will be elevation 15.3.
Which means that the culvert will be approximately eight feet. I'll be able to walk through it with my hand up like this?
I can show you, I have a cross section, but that's up to the moderator in the meeting.
So the answer is it's going to be quite high. The fact of the matter is, this will have a lot of impact. It's a beautiful end of town. During the last time it flooded, I was able to drive my truck through. We were told that you couldn't get a fire truck through. My truck's not as big as a fire truck. It also only flooded for a day. The issue that people are going to be in a terrifically horrible situation is for a short time, if there was really that serious an emergency, you know, heart attack, I believe we could call Manchester and say, we have an emergency, we can't get to the person, can you send an ambulance? Now, none of us want to be in that situation. But what we're dealing with is henny-penny. The sky's falling in. We're going to have that one day, and on that one day, what, we're going to have fires and ambulance requirements and... This is, in my view, chasing our money, even though it's federal money, it still comes from us. We still have to pay for it for a project that's way overbuilt. Aside from the fact that we voted it down. You know, I like Essex. I've been here 27 years. I actually love it here. One of the things I love about Apple Street, it's a beautiful drive. You know, same with Pond Street where I live. So this project is really unnecessary. We're just overreaching for an enormous amount of money that, yes, we are paying for. At the last meeting, I heard it was free money from the people up there. It's not free money. And if another town takes the money, I hope they need it for some really important project. I don't view this as an important project. I think we have way more important things to deal with. I'm a little upset that it's being presented again with the idea that we're going to give the selectmen the authority to make this decision. We didn't want them to do it the last time. Now they're asking for us to give them the permission to do this. That's what this is asking for, which to me feels like a circumvent of our vote. It seems like a second try with a lot of effort that I don't believe we should have wasted the time, the money to make these slides. I'm upset that we voted no, and no should be no, and that should be the end of it. Thank you.
Lisa, I think Lisa is next.
Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island Road. I'm on the lucky side of town where the tanker truck will be. Brendan pointed out, there's 46% of our residents on the other side of this, and there's a lot of them that aren't on the water system, and they're on wells. And the tanker truck is essential for that. And even though we have two ambulances and we can split the trucks up, we can't split the tanker truck up. So that's one thing to please keep in mind. People talk about the money and we're federal money and it's our money and we're paying it anyway. This money is, if we get the federal funding, it's money that's earmarked for climate resiliency projects. And if we don't get it, we're still going to pay it, but we're going to pay it to someone else. So it's not like we're saving money if we don't do this project because someone else is going to get the money for their project. And once again, Essex, like the sewer, won't get money for our project. I want people to think about the culvert, which is what started this whole project, and the fact that it is severely underdesigned and can't hold the flows that could come down that hillside. Remember what happened in Vermont? It's not out of the question that a snowmelt, rain event could be strong enough to wash this culvert out. And then we're left with no road and repairing it on our own nickel. When people talk about the eminent domain, it's important to remember that this is for easements, as President emphasized. It's easements over the property to be able to build this project, which is supported by Public Safety Departments, Fire, and Police, and by the Board of Public Works as well. And it's a very small portion of the property, and it is for easements. Something that people don't understand very well is the fact that town has to get up here and ask 2/3rds of the voters to support an eminent domain project. If the state gets tired of us and realizes that raising the causeway is prohibitively expensive and will put all the businesses out of business, then they're going to look at the next closest place, which is Apple Street. And the cool thing that the state can do is take eminent domain without asking anyone. They can just walk in and take whatever they want, and they can fix Apple Street and probably charge us for it. Or they can just take the whole road over, put a double yellow line down the middle of it, and make the whole thing safe and climate compliant. So this is a chance for Essex to actually do the right thing. Yes, the Apple Street doesn't flood regularly. Now we're talking 50- to 100-year project. That's what infrastructure projects are designed for. They look ahead in the 50- to 100-year window to make smart decisions for the town. So I just encourage people to support this because for once Essex could do the right thing, take care of our own in-house infrastructure with federal and state money. The state obviously supports this because they've already invested nearly half a million dollars in the project. There's a whole bunch of departments in the state that think it's a wise idea. Ipswich River Watershed, there's just numerous people involved in that climate change and looking ahead at those things who support this project. And so it's going to be, still be scenic, but it will be scenic 10, 15 feet farther back. There should still be trees there. The stone walls will be restored. But it's a chance for us to really take care of what we need to do to protect half of our residents here, please.
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lefkis. I'm not going to be for or against this. I just have a question. As someone who has had to present something again to town that failed the first time, I know that you must feel very strongly about it to do so because I heard quite a lot from voters that felt very strongly about their voice having been heard. So my question is, knowing how soundly this did not pass in the spring, what other planning and efforts are being taken right now to address this? Has all the effort gone into helping us understand through this presentation? Or is somebody tasked with looking at another option here? Because obviously that red, that red line isn't the option. And when I think of the fire department and, you know, the potential that that line we have where at some point we may not be able to be a call fire department, we've got some long-range planning that has to take place. My question is, who is responsible for looking at the other option should this fail again? And what has already been in place? This did, this did get voted down so soundly in the spring.
So we already have looked at many other options. And if this particular project is, the easements are not approved and it doesn't go forward, we'll have to go back and look at all the other things that have been put together in the past. The reason that the town has been working expeditiously to move toward this option is because it came out of the planning process that I mentioned. The hazard mitigation planning process and the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan process. And those things actually helped us to get the four grants that are getting us where we are tonight. So although many other things have been looked at, we've been advised through the process and from experts that we work with to see if this is something that we'll go through before we go back and look at something else.
I'm going to go here. My name is Shan McAdoo, coming to Apple Street. My remarks are extemporaneous based on what I've heard here tonight. First and foremost, this is a terrible microphone. Somebody could replace it. Very helpful.
Somebody just grab that microphone and give it to him for the time being? Just swap them up. Someone want to bend that mic? That one's working, that one's working. Walk it back and forth a few times.
So what I've heard here tonight sounds like a solution searching for a problem. Quite a bit of hyperbole and some minimization of impact for private property. Hyperbole. Mr. Zubriki made an excellent presentation, and I applaud the work that he's done. But he couldn't show one picture of Apple Street actually flooded. That's kind of meaningful. Because if this flooding problem is such a concern, why aren't there any pictures? Minimization. We talk about the need for the taking by eminent domain of people's property and how that isn't a big deal. It actually is a big deal because it will impact their use of that property forever in perpetuity. All of their setbacks will have to be recalculated should they go to want to build something. Everything, their property will be smaller and it will be impacted. And you're not talking about that. You haven't mentioned it. Finally, you are building this in such a way that it will change the character of that end of Apple Street permanently and forever. And it will no longer be a scenic byway that it was designated to be. It will turn into something different. Don't know what that will be, but it will be different, and it will not be what it was, what our forebears intended for it to be. Thank you very much.
Brendan's going to answer the question, why we don't see any flooding? Because you raised a question of...
Hello? Okay. So the question was asked, how come we haven't seen a lot of examples of flooding? Why don't we see pictures of it? And the answer is, we're being told by the state and federal government, people from MIT, people from Harvard, people who study this, that in the future, the incidence of flooding will increase sharply, not in a linear fashion, but in an exponential fashion. You may or may not believe that. We're trying to solve a problem now so it won't become an issue then, but everybody's entitled to their opinion.
I'm going to go over here.
Paul Chernby, 56, Apple Street. So today we've heard that it's supposed to be a public safety thing. And I agree, it is a public safety thing. But a statement that was made earlier is that speeds would not increase. So according to the Traffic Capacity Handbook, a Transportation Board book that published by the U.S. Department of Transportation, every foot you add to the width of a road will increase the speed of the road between 2.3 and 2.9 miles per hour. Every width of shoulder that you add to the road will increase speeds by between 1.5, 1.9 miles an hour. Just alone off of that, you're looking to increase the speed of the road by nine to 10 miles per hour. Pulling off trees that are right along the side of the road, which is a common traffic calming guide to go do that, adds about a 10% to 15% traffic calming effect, decreases speeds by that amount. By going and adding guardrail, increases speeds by that same amount. So all told, you're looking to put speeds in that section of the road into 35, 45 mile, or 35 to 40 mile an hour bin. Now, to break that down into the safety aspect, for this 1% chance of the year, the current proposal is looking to make the road that much less safe by increasing speeds. The speeds continue to carry on down the road farther. Now, when you go and you break it down to the actual safety of a pedestrian, cyclist, your child... your child walking down to their bus stop at the end of Apple Street, the 20 mile an hour impact with a pedestrian has only a 10% chance of being fatal. A 30 mile an hour impact with a pedestrian has a 50% chance of being fatal. By the time you hit 38 miles an hour, nine out of 10 times, it is fatal. And for those 10% chance that remain, severely crippling the person for the rest of their life. I don't want to see that be what is put on at the end of the road. There are multitude of efforts that can be made to go and add traffic calming features. Notice that there's FEMA, MIMA and a whole slew of other, you know, four-letter, three-letter acronyms put up there. There's organizations, Transportation for America, Pedo Bike Safe. There's the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Calming Handbook. The Federal Department of Transportation E-Primer on how to go make safe streets. Everything that's been proposed right now has looked at making it wider. It's actually gonna make it less safe for the 99 point whatever percent of the year that we don't have it. I don't want to see our first responders have to go sweeping up my kid as he walks to the bus stop off the side of the road. And frankly, guardrails increase the severity of that whole entire thing. And I'm totally happy to go point out these organizations in the future. I haven't had the chance to in the past. We need to go and make sure we're putting the right solution at the end of the road. And right now, it's an unsafe solution that's going to increase the risk to every single road user that isn't in the car. The only people who really benefit are gonna be car users at this point. Thank you.
Dan Doucet, John Wise Avenue. I've lived here all my life. I actually applaud the selectmen and the town officials for bringing this back to the town. It's a very important thing. A couple of things. Apple Street does flood. And probably that's not the biggest concern, but like Brendan said, it's the integrity of the culvert. If we lose that access, that is it in any type of a flood event. The causeway floods worse than it ever has. The water comes in from the opposite side from Woodman's and actually comes across the road. It used to come around back. It comes faster and more furious. I apologize, I was out in 2018 in that weather when that flooded, but we were a little busy and we didn't take any pictures. Next time I will document. So these things do happen and I appreciate that they've brought this back to the town. I think sometimes to get the right thing done, you have to educate people and make them understand how important it is. Funding is a, is a very important thing. If the town can align this funding, we've made mistakes in the past. We didn't have the sewer project paid for by the feds because we were pig-headed at the time and we ended up paying for ourselves. So having them looking at these funding opportunities to save the town money is only to our benefit and they're doing it for the right reason. It isn't to disrupt Apple Street. It isn't to make everybody upset. It isn't for that. It is a matter of public safety. And I would like to speak to Mr. Bruce's point about, you know, other people coming in and doing our calls when they see type of events. Obviously, those other agencies are busy. Gloucester's got flooding issues. Manchester will have weather issues. Trees are down all over the place. People can't get from point A to point B. We can't rely on our neighbors during these events. We have to do what's right for us citizens. And if I lived on the eastern side of town, I'd be concerned. The fire department typically puts a truck on that side of the town when it, you know, an event happens, but say if they need more resources, if that road isn't accessible and we can't get through, nobody's gonna get there to help them. There are no other options. Are we gonna put a ferry in? Are we gonna build a highway through Rocky Hill? Let's be prudent people here. There's not a lot of answers. Let's not muddy the question with all these, you know, these ideas. If you were a prudent individual, you would understand this, not a lot to do. This is it. We, I understand people are upset. Like I said, they came back to the town, but you know what? They're doing what's right for the town. So kujos to them.
I'm Karen Ansera. I live at 3 Andrews Street, right before where Andrews Street and Apple Street come together in a V at Southern Ave. I've lived in Essex for 30 years. I've never spoken at town meeting. I really, and I mean this, I appreciate the work that our town administrator, our selectmen, our public officials have put in to considering the eventuality of flooding across the causeway and threats to public safety. I appreciate the fact that we have another chance to look at this. I appreciated the town green presentation and the walkthrough. But I have come to the same position that the gentleman who spoke from over there came to because I see now the traffic that speeds onto Apple Street, that comes off Apple Street, it's an incredibly dangerous road. I never take Apple Street in the day if I can help it because so many people bike and walk on that street and someone's going to get hit. So with the widening of the street, with the guardrails, I do believe that's going to encourage more traffic on Apple Street and more fast traffic on Apple Street and that lives will be risked now, not 30 years from now. I hope we can come up with another solution. Thank you.
Roy Ternich, 10 Coral Hill Road. I believe in a level playing field when we're making these important decisions. The proponents of this plan have been allowed to make a comprehensive presentation with audiovisual assistance. I think that the opponents should have been allowed to make a comprehensive presentation also. Brendan made a number of sliding comments about the handout that was distributed. I think, you know, the opponents should have been allowed to make a comprehensive presentation. I really like the impassioned individual statements, but they're disconnected snippets. And I think when we're making this important decision, we should have a level playing field. And if Brendan is making a comprehensive presentation with audiovisual, the opponents should be allowed to make a comprehensive presentation. Thank you. Just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that. They asked me to make a presentation. No one on any other issue has asked for a presentation. They have to ask me to allow it and no one asked me except for Brendan. That's it. So they could have if they asked. I, I, I think for, for, you know, great public decisions in the future, that it might be a good idea to solicit comments. But anyway, that's my contribution. Thank you. And I think Apple Street is one of the most beautiful streets in New England and it would be a sin to make a mess of it.
I agree. It is, it is beautiful. Mark Renzi, 86, Southern. I move the motion.
I've got, I've got four people waiting to discuss it, so I'm gonna wait till...
Can we, can we do that beforehand?
No, I can, I'm gonna hear from four people that have been standing up. Rob?
Hey, it's Rob Fitzgibbon, 18, Main Street. I'll try to be really quick. Okay, so one of the things that we're talking about is like a black swan event. Has anyone ever heard of that or the concept of left of boom? When you think about things that are low probability and high impact, they always seem costly and stupid beforehand. I'm sure in Maui before the wildfires, they thought that. I'm sure in New Orleans thought that before its levees broke. Left of boom decisions always seem costly, stupid. Why are we doing this? Whatever. I disagree with the fear, the lawsuit fear mongering. I mean, look, this is a town that survived Kenomo Point and like we can, lawsuits don't scare us. I will say that in 1946, the town voted to have Apple Street become a road. And it's, I know in like the early 1970s, it got a scenic road designation, which in my opinion, of being on the planning board, which is actually a more, you know, pun intended kind of fig leaf, pretty toothless by law. But the scenic road designation is not the mandate to freeze the road to some sort of 1864 state where Timothée Chalamet and Saoirse Ronan can just kind of stroll down. This is a road. We need this. This is a safety issue. Administrators are for it. Our selectmen are for it. Our fire department's for it. Our police is for it. Selectman Fippen, who was one of the most ardent environmentalists in this entire town, got up and proposed this. We, if, 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 if Selectman Fippen is suggesting this, given his environmental track record, I'm gonna stand up and say, oh, I think we probably need this. Denying this article tonight worries me that it could exacerbate a catastrophe tomorrow. And I would just sort of ask, why is your scenery much more important than my neighbor's safety? Why is it that like, like, God forbid, if somebody's house burns down or somebody dies of a heart attack because a, a fire department couldn't get to them because of flooding, where would we be? Thank you.
Tom D'Amelio, 35, Water Street. I just want to make the point that Apple Street's role is baked in. It isn't something that we get to vote on. There's only two ways to get from one side of town to the other. There's the causeway and there's Apple Street. And it has a civic role to play. Apple Street has to do what it has to do. It has to be an alternate way from one side of town to the other. And constraining it to prevent that traffic from going through will not stop it. There's, there's going to be times when it's gonna be the only way to get from one side to the other. And we have to keep it, it was a pre-modern road and it has to be improved enough to maintain its role as a secondary solution to getting from one side of town to the other. So we have, in addition to its flooding, Apple Street is inadequate in terms of its basic width across many portions of its, of its length. And this is an opportunity to make it a little bit closer to what it needs to be to be able to handle the minimum baseline of traffic that it's gonna be forced down it. We don't get to choose the amount of traffic. We're going to have traffic that has to get from one side to the other and there are going to be crises on the causeway. We all have talked about this and it's going to be there. So we can, you know, wish it wouldn't happen, but the, but Apple Street needs to bear a minimum amount of traffic and we can't make that go away just because we want to. So it's better for us to allow the town to keep a minimum of engineering on that road necessary to support that amount of traffic over the years. And the flooding, to me, is secondary. Developing the engineering on that part of the road is a way to pay for it that we have to do. That road, if you drive down that road, it's scary. Imagine having 30 or 40 box trucks driving down that street while you're going in the other direction. It won't work. Yes, you are. It has to serve as an alternate.
Just address the moderator. Just so, this is Chief Francis, also the safety officer. I'll take the, I'll take the applause, meaning it's okay for him to speak even though he's not a resident.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Speaking from a public safety position, what we need to think about is the fact that when, when the causeway floods and Apple Street floods, and I understand it doesn't happen every storm, but we're cutting the town of Essex in half. So what, what happens is we invariably have to have access to both sides and without Apple Street, if we have to go through surrounding cities and towns, I've done it. I've taken the ride. It takes a good 15 minutes at least, depending upon traffic, to get from the east side of Essex to the west side of Essex. And speaking of response time, like firefighter Dawson also said, as far as having Manchester respond for us, or Gloucester, or Ipswich, or Hamilton, that's all well and fine, but the problem is, once again, it goes towards response time. And for what we do, response time is very important. We need to keep that in mind. We also need to keep in mind, I don't like to speak for the fire department, but I will. We have an on-call fire department, as you all know. They do a great job. We love them. Here's the issue. Let's not forget, if there's a call, they're coming from their home to go to the fire station, to pick up the ambulance or to pick up the fire truck, to have to go through surrounding cities and towns, that's gonna be a problem. From my perspective, I have to think about my offices as well. If I have offices on the Kenomo Point side of town and we can't get back to the east side, or we can't have an officer from the east side get, excuse me, the west side, get to the east side and they're in the middle of a domestic assault battery or something like that, I've got people that are out there that are unprotected and I need to think about all that stuff. I understand the emotion of this and I, you know, you'll vote how you'll vote, but I, I ask you to just think about the public safety perspective and think about response time. Because for us, minutes and seconds count. Thank you.
What's the point of order?
And so Mark Renzi asked for even a motion to move the previous question if we weren't given the third vote.
With people still nothing up, I don't have to take that. I can let them speak if I think there's people still ready to speak.
Is the whole, the whole point of the, of the motion to move the previous question is to stop this debate so we can vote on this? If we're allowed to vote when we want, have to make an option, it's referred to voting.
I know, I, I know it, I know it, I know it takes it...
If you want to make a debate...
You're gonna let me answer you?
Yeah.
It takes a, I know it takes a two-thirds vote, but if I see that there's enough people in the audience that want to speak to it, I am not gonna stop the debate.
That's the whole point.
Jay Tutsloff, 98, Western. I won't repeat the previous arguments, but one, one or two things I have not heard tonight. If the issue, first of all, over a year ago, I, with the help of others, had proposed a scaled-back design that I thought made a lot more sense and wasn't overbuilt like the present design. I think this whole thing needs more thought. And here's some facts that I challenge you with. If the issue is responsiveness, I drove from Western to Southern this morning with a stopwatch on. It took me three minutes and 43 seconds in a pickup truck to get across there. Not a ladder truck and not during storm conditions, so figure it'll take longer. The last 900 feet took 47 seconds. If you widen that and make it straighter, yes, you probably get through there faster. And the road would still be there in the doomsday scenario in which the storm was so bad it washed out the culvert. But I, I think this needs more thought. You're not gonna get there much faster unless you can cut that 47-second time of the last 900 feet. And how you do that without making yourself go faster through it, I don't know. Last thing, we've done this already. In 1949, on our end of the street, Mary and I owned the last 160 feet on the Western Avenue side. They did the whole bit, the eminent domain, the new bridge, the widening, all of that. What happened? Speeds went up. I'm scared to walk the dog down on that side of the street. So please, let's vote this down, take a timeout and come up with something that works better.
Hi, I'm Gil Freedon at 104 John Wise Ave. And I stand before you hoping that you vote yes on eight. So let's start with the facts. The 43% of us that reside on the West Gloucester and Manchester side of the river and 57% of us are on the Ipswich-Hamilton side, my side with the safety building. So as we discuss the fire truck later tonight, you might hear that our homeowner insurance rates are lower due to our strong public safety presence. What if insurance companies decide that the 43% of you over river need higher rates due to inaccessibility of safety personnel during an emergency? That would be awful. But consider this. Where in Essex can you drive 50 miles an hour? The answer is on 133 by the golf course and my house. Do you know why? Because my grandparents selflessly gave up a portion of their front yard for the good of our community, a non-urgent need. So an example of eminent domain for public infrastructure improvements, it's something we should be proud of. I'm very, my mom and I are both very proud of it. Article eight seeks less than 2% of everyone's property and furthermore, some of the eminent domain is temp, is temporary and they're gonna get it back. So the, the, I want to talk to Brendan's erosion thing. The erosion of the underlying support of our pavements of all of our roads raises the likelihood of road washouts. We might be investing in a million-dollar fire truck and the last thing we want is to see it submerged in the river. So the state roads are well-maintained in Essex. We need to do our part to maintain the roads too. We are a town that prides itself on self-resilience, self-reliance. I volunteer at the senior center and I've heard several times, we're doing it this way because it's the way we've always done it. So that's, that's, that's how that works in Essex. So that's the only criteria. And Charles Waldheim, he was the professor from the town green presentation, he acknowledged that Essex and kind of Cape Ann in, in general, have not historically managed themselves from the ground up. Perhaps that's why so many experts are encouraging us, us non-experts, to take the, take the reins and protect our future. The most crucial point, come on, the most crucial... The most crucial point, come on, the most crucial point, I said this at the last town meeting, we are not committing, I mean Brendan, that was a great presentation, we might end up doing it, but we are not tonight committing to that plan with Article eight. All we are doing is taking a step towards acquiring the low-lying flood-prone forestland around Apple Street. That doesn't lock us into any specific strategy. We can have so many more meetings about this. If some of us feel that the plan by the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management is too aggressive or incomplete, I've talked to an Apple Street resident that would really love to have sidewalks the entire length of the street. Wouldn't that be great? That would solve a lot of the problems we were talking about. Anyways, I don't think we'll get to sidewalks down Apple Street, but anyway, without the ownership or the easement of this little, of the land that Brendan showed us, no plan, no plan. Even Janet admitted, this is not something to say absolutely no to, it's just something that we have to keep thinking about. Great, let's keep thinking about it, but no plan can even be initiated without the ownership or easement. So, leaving this problem property in the hands of a few private citizens is a risk we should not put onto their shoulders. So, I implore you, yes on Article eight.
We've got two more and then we'll go to the vote.
First of all, thank you for letting all of us speak. I really appreciate it. I think we all have a voice and that was nice of you to hold that. Faith Guest, 35 Apple Street. And I will not go on, everybody's spoken quite clearly, but I want to make a few points to rebut some of the things that have been said. First, opponents of this bill, I'm one of them, did ask for that lovely presentation so that we could have some time to process and speak on it and we were denied by the town to see it. So, it would stand to reason that it would be wonderful if we could spend a little more time with Zubricki's comments. Okay. Second thing I heard tonight was in four grants, we've been spending money on this for quite a while, 2018 feasibility study. We just spent just south of $18 million on a public safety building. If we knew that 46% of the people couldn't be serviced for where it is, I, you know, attended all those meetings, I am a little concerned that we didn't address that upfront, you know, five years ago. And so now here we are, six people are going to have a land seizure. Let's just name it. Eminent domain is a land seizure. And that is not something to just look the other way on. The last thing I really want to comment on, because everybody else has touched on this, all the other issues, is that it's an emotional statement. I really resent the town pitting all of us against each other. Nobody wants to leave someone out and not get services when they have a heart attack. And no one on Apple Street wants their kid to get run over, okay? And then there are a lot of people in this room that are begging the town to pump the brakes on all of the spending. There is a lot of money being spent and we need to prioritize how we're going to address some of the big issues that are coming forward. This has been very clear. It is not the top priority, at least not yet. There are many other things that need to be addressed. Thanks for letting me have the time.
I don't think any of them worked.
It's working. It's working now.
Are we on? If you can't hear me, speak up. I want to be heard. First, we need a better sound system in this friggin' room. What is the point of coming to these town meetings if we can't hear what's going on?
Can we, can we?
Oh, for next time.
I need your name and stick to.
My name is Jack Gale. I live off of Pond Street. Eminent domain for the proposed Apple Street project is just a bad idea for many reasons, any of which you have heard. First of all, I'll skim through some of these because we've heard them. We voted it down. Since last May, the proponents of this apparently hoped for a different composition by calling this special meeting. We had a huge house last year and this article was resoundly, resoundingly voted down. We're tiring, or I'm tiring, of having to come back to vote on the same articles. It shouldn't happen. Nothing has changed. Secondly, our neighbors and fellow citizens, the abutters, do not want this. Even if they did, the town is not suggesting or budgeting a fair value. Now, you're deceiving yourself if you think there wouldn't be litigation over this. Grants don't cover that. We have no idea what that would cost. Three, massive environmental destruction. Given the projected likelihood and extent of flooding over the next 30 years, the project is completely overdesigned. The road surface would be raised as much as four and a half feet in places. I meant to bring my tape measure, but you know roughly what four and a half feet is. That's quite a change. Now, in order to support this height, this raised, raised elevation, substantial slopes, ripraps would have to be built on both sides to support this height, including within the wetlands. The total width of this construction area, including the widened roadbed, the shoulders, the guardrail, and the rock slope, I had to scale off the plans because it wasn't designated in it with a number in the plans. I scaled from a minimum of 40 feet to where it's raised the least to 70 feet or more in width, or a length of 850 feet. The town has told us that 99 trees would be removed. The plans show that in the swath cleared for construction, only five or six, depending on which plan you study, only five or six trees would remain within this swath, 850 feet long. This is a clear cut. There's no question about it. By the town meeting vote in the 70s, Apple Street was designated a scenic way, affording certain protections against exactly this sort of devastation. The town has overridden these. Surveys of Essex residents have repeatedly shown us that protecting the rural quality of the Essex landscape and natural environment are their highest concern. The DEP and MEPA have asked the town for the least environmental impactful plan.
10 seconds.
We haven't seen anything like that. Please vote this down again. Thank you.
So, this takes, this takes a two-thirds vote, not for the money, but for the possible taking. So, all those in favor of Article eight, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article eight. I am going to declare it does not pass. Article, Article eight did not pass. It needs a two-third. I did not get two-thirds. Article, Article nine.
Hello? Hear me?
Some, I've already started Article nine. What? I asked for Article nine. I'm asking, she's making her motion. No, she's making a motion on number nine, which I called for. So, she's going to make her motion. I can't recognize you because I've already asked her for not Article nine. You can, you can do anything after we've done nine.
Can you hear me? I, Tina Lane, move at the town vote to accept provisions of Section 3Ea of Chapter 64G of the General Laws allowing the town to impose an community impact fee of not more than 3% of the total amount of rent upon transfer of occupants of a professionally-managed short-term rental unit, which third charge shall be, in addition to other state and local excise taxes assessed upon the transfer of short-term rental units as more fully described in Article nine of the fall town meeting warrant.
Is there a second discussion?
Elizabeth Eaton, 17 Spring Street. I believe we voted.
She's got discussion on this article? Sure. Sir, I have to follow procedure and I called for nine, so that's what I'm doing. I have every intention of following the articles and the orders that are presented right now.
The Economic Development Committee has been asked to find new revenue for the town. This article is in response to that request. Like the Local Meals Act, this fee will be passed on to the customer. It is our goal that the town capture a bit of short-term rental dollars to benefit our residents. I hope the town will approve this article. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article nine?
Thank you. Elizabeth Eaton at 17 Spring Street. I believe this was brought up at the last town meeting and we voted it down. We did, at the last town meeting, they did two articles following this thing of raising the amounts that the town's going to get. So, last time, we raised it up to a 6% local excise tax paid the town. This is in, in the notes here. There was already a fee of 5.7. Now, we're looking to give it another, get another tax name and you're getting it up to 14.7% tax. So, it's easy to say, oh, it's being passed on, it's passed on. But that's a lot of tax. And are we asking all our businesses, everybody who has businesses here in town, that we're going to be, are they getting, are they paying that much?
Further discussion?
Yes. Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street. I do remember these from the last town meeting and I'm, I actually am glad to see them come back because we have Article nine and 10. The difference between them being who's in charge of the Airbnb or the, the short-term rental facility and that in Article nine, it's investors who are not owner-operators, not people who live in the building, that sort of thing, and that in Article 10, that would impact short-term rentals where owner-operators are involved there. So, my question is for Chief Francis, if he would be recognized to answer. Are you seeing a community impact such that we need a fee to cover some of that? And if so, is there a difference in the impact that he's seeing between investor-type situations versus owner-operator situations?
Anyone want to answer that?
Forgive my ignorance, Teresa, what exactly type of impact are we talking about?
Well, it's a community impact fee, so that's the question, isn't it? What would the community impact fee go to? My understanding was that there are increased needs for, for safety and, and for police presence, that sort of thing. What, what would be the impact? Maybe it's not you that should answer it, I'm sorry.
I mean, we haven't really seen a marked impact based upon of short-term rentals or Airbnbs. I mean, we do, we do get some, we do have some residences in town where we're responding to their, their houses on a regular basis, but I'm not so sure it's short-term or, or what's going on, to be honest with you.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Michael Ginn, 26 John Wise Avenue. After having created a new business in town, Bed and Breakfast, across the street from the fire station, I encourage everyone to vote this article down. I don't believe that more tax for businesses are appropriate. People that come to town to stay here for a couple of days or a week, whatever, visit all the restaurants, they buy things from some of the gift shops, and they spend a lot of money in this town. The more money that you increase, the rental units, they're going to go elsewhere. And it's also favors the bigger places. It's almost like the bigger hotels and such are encouraging these taxes to put these little people out of business. So, I encourage everyone to vote this down. I don't believe it encourages the creation of new business. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Meredith Paulus, 85 John Wise Ave. I don't know a ton about this issue, but I've been hearing a lot about transfer fees in the news recently in places like Boston and Cape Cod where short-term rentals by owner-occupants have become an issue when it comes to local housing that is affordable for people. They're basically removing from the availability in a town, properties where younger families, smaller families, single people, the people who work in our restaurants, the people who work for the small businesses, where will they live if all of the small units are being used for short-term rentals? My understanding of this article is that we would be trying to discourage people from using their smaller units as short-term rentals so that those could then be made instead more appealing as a long-term rental. The person would still be able to rent the property out, but it wouldn't be on a day-to-day or a week-to-week basis. It would be on a month-to-month or a year-to-year basis, thereby creating a larger inventory of affordable housing. Just a statement, just my understanding.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article nine, raise your card. All those opposed? The article, the motion fails. Sorry. Article 10. Is there a second? I'll need that writing. She wants to reconsider Article eight. She, she's going to have to write down the motion. She's going to have to write down the motion. Yeah, I know. Did you get her name? So the motion on the table is to reconsider Article Eight. What this means is if you vote yes to reconsider, we can discuss Article Eight again. If we voted no to reconsider, we do not reconsider Article Eight again tonight. So... And this takes a two-thirds vote to reconsider. So all those in favor of reconsidering Article... I'm sorry, is there... We can discuss it, sure. Hold on a second. Yes, you can.
How is this microphone working?
Sounds good.
So the reason we would reconsider, or the reason I would reconsider is so that we could vote it down, so that the vote holds. Now, I don't know where the young lady who spoke, who presented the motion, don't know where she stands on the issue. If she wants it really reconsidered, so that perhaps because some people have left the Assembly, the vote could come out differently, that would be a really sleazy trick. We voted this down. We voted this article down. Now we vote down the reconsideration, and it will go away. Thank you.
Does everybody understand? So, all those in favor of reconsidering Article Eight, raise your card. All those opposed? It does not get reconsidered. Article Ten. Excuse me? Nope, I've already asked for Article Ten. Sure.
I, Tina Lane, move that Article Ten indefinitely postponed.
Second? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article Ten, raise your card. All those... Is that what it was? Oh. I'm sorry. I was interrupted. I'm on a different time zone, sorry. All those wanting to indefinitely postpone Article Ten, say aye. All those opposed to postponing, raise your card. We are postponing Article Ten. Make your motion.
Hi, my name is Tom Daniel, Twenty-Seventh Pond Street. I actually wanted to reconsider Article Nine, the one before this, for the 3% impact fee, just because I thought it warranted a little more discussion.
Is there a second to that? You want... You think I'd add to that? Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, the point I wanted to make is, I know as a Town, we're always looking for new revenue, and this is a way to collect some revenue from people who are visiting here. I'm not looking to, you know, cause pain or stress the businesses here, but as I understand it, the people that would be paying this are folks that are visiting here. And if you're spending $100 a night or $200 a night, that's $3 or $6 more that the folks would be paying. And I don't think, if someone's making a decision to come to Essex to enjoy all that we have here, I don't think $3 or $6 a night is going to change that decision. That seems to be $3 or $6 more that winds up coming to us when we're looking to try and collect new revenue. And I just want to thank the committee that I guess the Select Board had charged for trying to find some new resources for that. So I wanted to just offer that perspective.
Okay, we'll go right to the motion to reconsider Article Nine. So all those in favor of...
Can we have another point? Just that you said it's $3 more. You're talking $15 more. You're saying it's $3 more per this on top of the other dollars that are already there, so it's not $3 more.
We're just actually voting...
This isn't out-of-Towners, this is us that have...
We're not voting on the article, we're voting on whether we want to reconsider it. So all those in favor of reconsidering Article Nine, raise your card. All those opposed? That requires a two-third, it does not pass. Ten was indefinitely postponed, thank you. We'll go on to Article Eleven.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that Article Eleven be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? Discussion?
As we get closer into the details of this particular article, which is to eventually become a special legislation, a bill to cap property tax for qualified individuals, we found out that we have a lot more questions that we need to answer. We're also following a bill that is in the state legislature right now that is kind of doing something similar, so we want to wait and see what that does. Our intent is to bring it to a town meeting in the spring.
All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article Eleven, raise your card. Any against postponing? Motion passes. Article Twelve.
I, Jay Tutsloff, move that the Town appropriate from fiscal year 2024 Preservation Fund estimated annual revenue or other available funds, all as specified Preservation Act Town Meeting handout, amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for specific projects transferred.
Is there a second? Discussion? Discussion?
I chair the Community Preservation Committee, and just a reminder for those of you, the numbers on the handout, three to four specific projects. I guess, as a committee, our job is not to issue an opinion on these, but rather to evaluate them and vote on whether they meet criteria of the Community Preservation Act. They're quite stringent. We hadn't met for a year because no one had come to us, so I am happy to see four different worthy proposals here, and that's really all I can say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Twelve, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Thirteen.
I, Ruth Arprey, move that the Town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $353,255 for the Town's apportioned share of the two turf replacement field projects that have been completed by the Manchester Essex Regional School District.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So as we know, we have two, or we are a regional school district. Some of you may or may not know that we recently replaced two turf fields. One's the Highland Field, which is at the middle high school, and the other is Brook Street Field. Both fields are used by our students for sports and other activities, and this is just our apportioned share. The project is done. It was completed, and some of you may have heard the number 1.6 for all of it. It actually came in lower than anticipated, so we are fortunate that we have some savings there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Thirteen, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Fourteen.
Article Fourteen. I, Michael Flynn, move that the Town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 for the Town's share of an apportioned share of an operational and/or financial audit of the Manchester Essex Regional School District.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is an idea that's been kicked around for a while. This is a chance to get an outside perspective of best practices, practices that can be improved. This is a rough estimate of the cost, but, you know, many school districts go through this every 10 to 20 years, looking for best practices, best things that are being done across the board. So our share would be 40,000 of this, of which there'd be a pro-rata share from our partner in this school district.
Further discussion?
Hi, Annie Cameron, Twenty-three Pickering. We do know that Manchester rejected this tonight, so they are not participating in this for this year. I take issue with this ask. The Towns have not provided a clear goal nor any specifics about the intended scope of work, and they've not worked with the school committee on this. Last week, on the seventh, the school committee was presented with a paper copy of the scope of work, didn't receive the draft prior. The draft that they were given has not been approved by the Manchester FinCom Board of Select nor the Essex FinCom or Board of Select. The two Towns don't seem to be on the same page in terms of what's required of this audit or review. I think the FinCom changed the language to be a review. How should we be funding the schools, and at what level, and how to approach the regional agreement? The school district is caught in the middle of trying to navigate contradictory expectations. I am voting against the audit until Town leaders can clarify what they're asking for. We shouldn't spend the dollars that should be allocated to the actual education of our kids until Town leaders can work collaboratively with each other and the school committee. The Essex Town leadership claimed in September that it will struggle to fund the schools this next fiscal year, and until they figure out what they want, we should be saving money to pay for teaching and learning. There is also a possibility of a DESC free review that the school committee talked about last week, so I think we should explore free first, and I think it would be great if the school district just led that process and went forward with it outside of the two Towns.
Go ahead. What's that?
Okay, hi, I'm Sarah Wolf, Por Saganese Creek Road. First of all, the operational review, if requested, that's the purview of the school committee, not the Towns. However, the school committee only found out that the Town of Essex approached Manchester on October 31st, when they had begun a conversation about the idea. Thankfully, a Manchester Select Board member had come to their meeting and filled them in. This happened after an all-board meeting that was designed to facilitate communication and collaboration between three entities: Essex, Manchester, and the Manchester Essex Regional School District. At that meeting, the Town of Essex advocated for revisiting the apportionment formula and avoiding a two-Town meeting. The Town of Manchester had no appetite for revisiting the formula and indicated that they would welcome a two-Town meeting. But leaders from both Town entities said that they would be in favor of some kind of operational review. The school committee didn't take a position. They only found out that the audit would be on the warrant six days ago, on November 7th. Hence, their official position tonight, they just, well, that they stated that it would be their official position at the school committee, but they hadn't had time to consider this. Essex Town leaders continue to cast doubt on the excellent leadership of our district as a cost-saving measure. Our budget may be tight, but there are more productive and collaborative ways to go about solving the problem. The audit is not it. The draft statement of work suggested that the audit look at enrollment, enrollment trends, course offerings, sections, staffing and class sizes. This review is all about finding more cuts. In the last five years, the district has made cuts and dipped into reserves to meet Essex's R budget constraints. We have lost 15.85 positions, mainly through attrition, in the past five years as we have reduced staff in line with declining enrollment. Hamilton Wenham did a review, and they decided not to make the cuts that were suggested. It wasn't worth the money. The school committee has already looked at a review that would be free to taxpayers. Let the school committee do their job, and it's appropriate to leave decisions about audits to them. Operational reviews, budget cuts in the school budgets are the purview of the school committee. And finally, the Town of Manchester has already spoken. They don't want this audit. If the school district decides, if the school committee decides that they want an audit or review, it is up to the school committee to decide that and bring it to the schools. Thank you.
So I just want to provide a little bit of context here. On September 19th, the finance committees and select boards of both Manchester and Essex met along with the school committee. Each Town described their financial position and shared views on handling the cost of the district and doing so within the constraining framework of Proposition Two and a Half. A key takeaway was that it would be helpful to both Towns to have a review of the district to be completed by an independent third party. Last year, the assessment to both Towns combined grew by 1.97%. That number alone is well within reason. But for Essex, our share of the budget grew by 3.93%, and Manchester's grew by 0.85% due to apportionment. As I've said before, we can't control that. The point is that even within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, this budget was a stretch, and we had to use every penny we had available to pay for it, given the failed override. As a result, when you see your tax bill in January, you will likely have a material increase, even though we didn't pass the override. Unfortunately, this is going to play out all over again this year. Even if the district presents a budget at 2.5% overall to both Towns, it's going to exceed 3.7% for Essex. We likely won't have the taxing capacity to pay beyond that, so it will require another override effort. That's not a choice, that's a fact. An independent review would give voters in the spring a helpful resource to make a determination. An analogy would be that of a company or an operating entity that brings in a third party to review their operations with a fresh eye and suggest various ideas to create better efficiencies. In this case, it would be up to the school committee to determine whether they wish to implement any of the ideas, and it also provides valuable information for voters, for all of you, and it would be helpful resource not just for an override in Essex, but for a potential super-Town meeting next summer, which could be the case if we go through this again. So remember, this is 50% of our Town's budget. It's higher in Manchester, so I urge you to consider a yes vote for this. It's a good financial practice. Thank you.
Further discussion? I think it's Rob.
Rob Fitzgibbon, Eighteen Main Street. I agree, this is a, an independent third-party audit is a great idea. I would say we vote yes, and it's an opportunity to educate ourselves from an unbiased perspective. We have never, as my understanding is, audited our regional financial structure before, so why not do it? I mean, I know that, like, the school committee says, like, this is their purview, but it's all of our tax money, and if we can educate ourselves with a audit like this, it'll just benefit us down the road. Thank you.
I want to go back there. Go ahead.
Jay Tutsloff, Ninety-eight Western. I have no skin in this game. My kids are grown, and I have not been to any meetings. I do work for a large bank, and in my world, slow-walking or stonewalling an auditor is a fireable offense. So I would urge anyone who is opposed to this to consider, is there something to hide? What is it that you're not comfortable that someone would see? And I'll give you a very personal example. Mary and I have been married for going on 36 years. She can ask for my phone at any moment and peruse it as long as she wants, and guess what? That's a behavior modifier, okay? So I strongly support this audit. I think there's nothing but good that can come from it, and this relationship needs an infusion of trust, and I don't see it so far. Thank you.
I, Nina McKinnon, 1 Lowland Farm, fully support Article 14. As Chairman Buttrick stated earlier, a point of agreement from the joint boards meeting September 19th, which was the FinCom and Board of Selectmen from both towns, Manchester and Essex, fully supported an independent third-party review, and I believe that everyone in this room and in our community want the best education for our town. During the past year, it was very contentious. Those that weren't able to make all the various school meetings, budget workshops, would not realize that the school committee stated multiple times that the towns need to help solve the problem. Having an independent review allows the towns of Essex and Manchester to provide this help. There was a comment just earlier talking about loss of staff, 15.85. To put some context to that, we've, in the town of Manchester, there were 824 students. There are now 680. In Essex, there's 511, there's 495. The town of Essex is still using the school. If, I can't do the math fast enough to say that the delta of 16 students in five years is not a lot compared to over 120 that have been lost from Manchester. For those who will state, why spend the money? This is less than one-half of 1% of the school's current annual budget of almost $30 million. Other school districts have done this, and it just makes sense.
The, the school is audited every year, and I actually listen to those meetings, and every, and it's boring. Every year, we get a very good management letter. It's all posted on the website. There, there's no, there, there are audits every year, I saw, and I don't like when you imply that the school district is hiding something, because they're not. Because we already have audits. Sorry, Jeff. I know. Also, the DESE can do a review, and it's free. I don't know why we're really talking about this, because Manchester's already said that they're not going to allocate any dollars for it. So I don't know how the school committee proceeds, but I would, I would engage the DESE to do a review, and the school committee should drive it.
Can't hear you. Is that on? Nope, it's not on.
Hello. Antonella Muniz, Harlow Street.
Who's the name? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Antonella Muniz. I live on Harlow Street. So I've been paying attention to some of the school budget discussions. I am going to just be forthcoming and clear that it is very confusing, but in my best understanding, the school budget states that it grows at roughly a 3.5% rate every year. But to avoid asking for a yearly override from a member town, the district artificially suppresses any increases by using reserves. When it seems the district increases will overtake the reserves, it asks for an override. A budget that needs to be artificially suppressed year after year is not sustainable. The problem lies in the structure of the budget, and I am not talking about apportionment. I'm talking about the breadth of our class offerings and the quality of instruction. I just looked at MCAS scores and compared the elementary schools, just as an example, not necessarily to see how we're doing in comparison to the state, but comparing Manchester to Essex. The numbers that I'm going to present are the percentage of kids that scored a meets or exceeds the standard on the MCAS. So for math, Manchester had 67% kids meet or exceeds. EES had 38%. For English Language Arts, Manchester had 61% of its students meet or exceeds. EES had 50%. And finally, for Science, Technology, and Engineering, Manchester had 68% of its kids meet or exceeds the standards, while Essex had only 29%. That is a stark difference.
You need to get to the topic of the article.
Okay.
Because you're losing me, so.
Okay, so that's a stark difference, and so if you're looking at equity between the schools, there's something wrong, and I think you should vote for the audit. Thank you.
I don't know who was next. Go ahead.
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street, and speaking as chairperson for the MERSD School Committee. To answer the question of why don't they want, I would just like to share that the school committee discussed this at our most recent meeting, and we believe that we have had insufficient time to determine whether we can collaboratively develop a scope of work, and so our committee does not take a position on this article. We have not said we do or don't want it. As far as sharing just some things by way of facts, within the article language, it says operational and/or financial audit. I would like to just be very clear that by mandate, we are audited annually, a financial audit. Those audits are available on our website, all the way back to, parts of it, back to 2002, some back to 2009, but those are all available annually. There are additional third-party reviews that are available. We're in the middle of two right now. One happens to be NIASC accreditation for the elementary schools. That is a third-party review for our elementary schools in particular. And we're also in, in the middle of a K through 12 review for special education right now. Recent third-party reviews are also available, back to 2016 on our website. You can see how we have fared. And regarding the option for this, moving forward, again, Manchester did not vote to approve this. However, the school committee certainly will have some deliberation to do about how we move forward, whatever the outcome of this vote, but yes, there is an option that we have learned about from DESE, that they have revived a review process that seems quite comprehensive. It's certainly a good place to start. We will have to have this review at some point, and a topic for conversation among the school committee will be to, to ask whether or not, or whether or not to ask to expedite the process and ask us to come up a little bit sooner in that. So third-party reviews are a thing we're very comfortable with and, and used to, but on this article in particular, the school committee does not take a position. Thank you.
Jody Harris, 21 R, Spring Street. As a member of the Regionalization Study Committee, I realize that we made a mistake. We should have baked in a third-party review in our regional agreement. Some other regional districts do have this baked in, and it's triggered every time there's been an agreement change. We've had two agreement changes in our 23 years. So we've been 23 years as a district. We've never had an outside third-party review. We have an almost $30 million budget. We spend 50% of our money here in Essex, your tax dollars, our collective money, on the school. We've had declining enrollment over the last decade, 20%. We've had four contentious budget seasons. We've had a failed override. We've had two capital projects successfully under our belt, and one more to come, Essex Elementary School. We just funded two turf fields this evening, which is another success under our belt. I'm going to remind people, I support the district. I have for 23 years. We worked hard to get here, and we simply are at an impasse. So we've had one all-boards meeting on September 19th that Ben referred to. The two finance committees from both towns and the two select boards from both towns came back with a single takeaway, which was an operational, I'm going to call it a review. We're not review, we're not auditing finances. Powers and Sullivan, I think, is still your auditor, has been since day one, and does, I'm sure, a great job. I've looked at the audits, I don't see anything that alarms me. But with one point of agreement, I think it makes sense when you're at a budget impasse and you're on the heavy end of apportionment, and for you, those of you who don't know what that means, it means that we have more students enrolled in Essex and a declining enrollment in Manchester, so we pay a heavier piece of the, the share of the pie. With a 2.5%, prop 2.5%, 2.5%, we hit the limit very quickly. So even if the school does a 2.5% budget with apportionment, we're at 4.93%. At what point does our town start to disappear when 4.93% of the budget goes to funding the school? We need to find a way to fund the school. Bringing in a third party to do a top-to-bottom review is something that is a best practice. If you haven't, go to the Hamilton Wenham website, put in operational review, and you will see a very large document that reviews a lot of items and compares it to other school districts or best practices. Again, a third-party review, who wouldn't support it? This would help to build trust and communications with the school committee. They make commendations and recommendations. So they pat the school on the back for the things they do great, and they make some recommendations on areas of improvement. For Hamilton Wenham in 2011, it resulted in recommendations of $16.3 million in savings over a five-year period. I'm not here to speak to how they actually implemented any of that, but they sat an operational audit committee based on town government and the school committee, and they worked together on this process. We need to continue to work together. We can't stand up a school district by ourselves. Manchester can't stand up a district by themselves. That's why we needed each other. We still need each other today. But if the third-party operational audit came out and said, you're not spending enough money, and that's why you have poor MCAS scores, then we all have to figure out what we do with that and how we pay that bill. So when you don't approve things that provide new revenue, like the impact fee.
30 seconds.
Or we did approve a meals tax of .75 in 2014 or 15 that provides, to date, $2 million. Those are the places where we would find new revenue. Annie said to me years ago, we need the pot shop so that we can fund the school budget. We're going to need it. Little did I know how badly we were going to need it, but we need a mechanism to find answers. Thank you.
Want to go that way? Go that way. Go ahead. I'd like to move the question. Uh, that takes a two-thirds vote. This was terminate debate, so all those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your card. Someone finally followed the right procedure in moving a question by standing in line, and you take it in order, and I'm taking it in order as you make the motion. So all those in favor of terminating de- Unfortunately, I can't see what the water is.
No, I know.
Jeff? Do I recognize the? Since I didn't see the two people next to me, I'm going to allow this, and it will be done after that, next three people will be done. Sorry. So. We're going to go here, there, and there, and we'll be done. Me? Yes, you can, you can sit down. We're done after this.
Guy Bradford, 22 Main Street. So I, I guess I just do have a question. If, if in fact, this has been voted down, the $80,000 that Manchester was proposing to spend, if that has been voted down, what's the effect of the vote tonight? What would happen? I'd like to know, I think it's important to know what's going to happen. Would we end up paying the entire 120?
Mr. Zabricki?
If Essex approves the $40,000, then the selectmen could try to work with the district to have some kind of review done with that amount of money, with probably, obviously, a different scope.
So you don't know?
I, I do know. They, they could ask the, the district whether the district would cooperate with a review with the money that the town of Essex potentially has if it's voted in.
Okay, I have a, I have a, I have a second question. Or, or, or a point of view, I guess I'd say. It's my understanding, from what I've heard, that this, this proposal really hasn't been reviewed or considered by the school committee. And, and second, that it's a proposal for an audit that is non-financial operation, which in my mind, at least, clearly is the purview of the school committee. So I think on those grounds alone, and on the grounds that the school committee hasn't considered it, I think this, the, the bringing this motion is premature, and I think we should not approve it. And my third question is for Ben. You said early tonight that none of these free cash items were affecting the operating budget, right? The general fund.
Question needs to come through the moderator, sir.
Pardon?
Question needs to come through the moderator, not directed at anyone.
Question is-
You can ask me the question.
So I'll ask you. These funds, where will the payment for, for this $40,000 come? It'll come from free cash, but it'll be out of the, it'll be posted to the, to the general fund, correct?
Free cash. It comes out of free cash.
But against the general fund?
No, it's free cash.
Right. But it's free cash that we could, we could spend next fall, uh, next spring, I'm, I mean, within the general fund. So we're using our free cash now, right? And really, this applies to a couple of other items here. We're using our free cash now on items that we could, if we didn't spend that free cash, we could apply it to the budget.
No.
No?
That's what I want to clarify. Free cash-
Haven't, oh, go ahead.
Let him answer the question.
Sorry.
Free cash cannot be applied to the, it's not a best practice to apply it to an operating budget, because it adds to the tax levy and it becomes a recurring-
Haven't we applied free cash to the school budget in the past?
If, if we make the decision, technically, we're not disallowed from using free cash, but when you use free cash to pay for any budget item, whether it's the school or not, it becomes part of the tax levy, which grows each year 2.5%. So it's-
Yeah, this is our free cash right now, so it's not part of-
This is our free cash, and what we're talking about is a one-time-
So if we decide-
We're not going to have a discussion. That's not how it works. If you have a serious-
There are alternative uses for free cash, which could be voted in, in, in the spring, if we don't spend it now.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. Sure. If we don't spend the cash now, we can vote, we can vote in the spring.
So I've had the honor of serving on the Board of Selectmen for the last four and a half years. What frustrates me is that every year, we get to budget season with the school, and we hear the same thing. We hear about the budget, how we can't afford it, what are we going to do? So every year, we all look at each other, and we say, how do we find efficiencies? What do we do? And we hear, help us pass this budget. We're going to look for efficiencies before the next budget season. Four and a half years later, we're still hearing the same thing. So this year, at a meeting, I said, well, I guess it's up to the town to figure out, what are we going to do? How do we move forward? One of the things that was alarming at the beginning of the year was that our enrollment is down 20%. 300 students in the last 10 years. That's a huge number. That's a huge number. So our enrollment is down 20%, but our budget isn't down 20%. Our teachers aren't down 20%. Our head count, we're told, is down 15.85 FTE. But when we ask for proof of that, who are these teachers? What do they teach? What are the courses? We're told in public meetings that are recorded that we'll get these answers. We get beautiful charts. We get bracketed studies. That's all we get. You've heard non-factual information or read it on social media about these multiple data requests that the Board of Selectmen are just barraging the district with. I had won one single data request. Interestingly enough, it was not my own data request. It was former selectman Guy Bradford's data request. He started requesting information in January 2023. It was very clear and concise what we were looking for. We wanted course studies. We wanted head counts. We just wanted data, things that we're entitled to because we do pay that bill. When selectman Bradford decided or made the decision that he was no longer going to serve as a select board member, and we thank him first time, that torch was passed to me. I'm now the school liaison. So I meet with the school committee in collaboration, public meetings, and I'm there to represent you, my fellow residents, the people that elected me. I am the most fiscally responsible person you will ever meet. The police department will tell you I'm cheap. That's another story. So in January, selectman... I apologize. Selectman... Former selectman Bradford started asking for this information. When he left, I picked up that ball, and I ran with it, the same information. It was very clear what I asked, and I actually have that here because I don't want anything to not be factual. I'm writing to you in your capacity as the... Insert district name because I sent this data request to not only Manchester Essex Regional School District, but also to Essex Tech because in searching for data, I wanted to be fair. Insert district name. Access officer to request any and all records which contain information identifying the number of students in each section of each class offered by district name from the beginning of the academic year 2022 to present. This includes records identifying the title of each and every section offered in the high school, including but not limited to core and non-core curriculum classes and special education classes. The grade level of each section, the number of students in each section, and how many certified teachers teach in each individual section. If more than one teacher is typically in the classroom given for a single section. Thank you, Ruth Perrine. So I received 53 pages of data from Essex Tech. This is what their response looks like. It's just a lovely data chart with information, courses, teachers, number of students. This is what I received from Manchester Essex. It's 72 pages. This was 53. This is 72. This is black boxes. This literally tells me nothing. So I don't understand why Essex Tech was forthcoming with everything I asked, and Manchester Essex has black boxes. So if this does not scream audit or third-party independent peer review, I don't know what it does. This is not about our financial standings. This is about what's going on? Why are we down 20%? Why is our bill not changing? Where are the teachers? Where is the data? Thank you.
May I respond?
We're done right here. We're done right here.
Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road, and I will be brief. I think it's perfectly reasonable for the investment that two towns have in this system to ask for any kind of review they want. The problem I have with what was presented or not presented tonight and before was the scope is not clearly defined. I don't see a lot of examples. Jody said Hamilton Wenham maybe had some recommendations, but you don't see a lot of examples of districts that were given things other than just cut program or cut staff. So that is my problem. But I do think it's reasonable that towns get the information they want, and if that means some sort of independent review, that's fine. To correct a little bit of what Jody said about when the agreement was changed, there was an independent reviewer. Mr. Jones sat on that committee as our member of the Board of Selectmen. Certain things were changed to the agreement, and it is very important, when changing that agreement, that you do have an objective third party. I agree with that. And finally, being a member of the Regionalization Study Committee, how many years ago was that? 20-something? I think the mistake that I think we made was including student enrollment in any formulas. And there's... The variables that are affected, that are in play are town population, equalized valuation, which is really property values, and student population. And the formula was changed because it was too much in our favor. So believe it or not, student enrollment on that first go-round of changes was introduced more into the gyrations. And Mr. Zabricki actually designed the formula, so you can imagine it's not simple. But anyway, the argument I lost was student enrollment should not be included. And the proponents of that were saying there has to be skin in the game. But I assure you, if 23 years later, if we could sit down and say, "This is the volatility of that variable. It causes Essex's assessment to be 7% when the budget's going up 3%," and my numbers may not be exact, I assure you, we would have rethought, put some kind of guardrails around there, or just leave it out. So for anyone involved in this discussion right now, I would say, stop apologizing. It's not our ability to pay as a town. It's about making the formula reasonable and take student enrollment out of it. Thank you.
I was very clear. I was done after this gentleman right here. So I'm going to terminate debate, and we're going to...
The chair of the school committee at the mic, she's responding to the Board of Selectmen chair.
I already told them I was moving on, so I'm moving on.
Okay, so you don't want me to clarify incorrect information?
Nope.
Okay. The order, none of that? Okay.
So Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14, raise your card, please. All those opposed? I'm in doubt. I'll need the tellers. So do we have six? We have six tellers. People in the back on the... You need to pick a side if you're going to vote. Either that side or that side of that aisle. All those in favor of Article 14, raise your card, and hold them up so they can count. Okay, you guys can take a break. Yep. The motion passes.
Point of order?
Article 15.
I'd like to make a... Brian Grofstra, 30, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 14, simply so that this school committee chair can have a chance to speak again.
I'm not going to honor the reconsider. I don't think there's anything new that we can add to this discussion whatsoever.
About that?
Oh, 101 to...
16?
101 to 60.
Why can't we honor it and request a reconsider?
Because I don't think there's going to be any more discussion needed. I think there's been enough discussion on the motion and the article.
Is that...
I can, actually, yes.
Dan Dusset, John Wise Avenue. I, Dan Dusset, and with the town, vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $755,000 and to transfer from the Vehicle Stabilization Fund the sum of $445,000 for the total appropriation of $1,200,000 to purchase a fully-equipped ladder truck for the fire department, to replace the fire department's existing ladder truck, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into necessary agreements to effectuate the purpose of this vote and dispose of the old ladder truck by sale or trade.
Is there a second discussion?
So I'm going to give a little insight because I don't think sometimes people actually know what we do and why we have these vehicles. The Essex Fire Department has a fleet of seven vehicles. And I'll just describe our current vehicles, what they're used for, and the reason for our funding request. The fire department has two BLSA ambulances. That's pretty straightforward. Those are used for transporting patients to the hospital. We have a squad truck, which is a small four-wheel-drive vehicle with a small tank and water. That's utilized for forest fires, or fires in the woods, or somewhere where we don't want to take the more bigger expensive apparatus. The other two engines, we have two engines. They both have 1,000 gallons of water and a large pump on them, hoses and so forth and other equipment. Another vehicle we have is a tanker. I don't know if most know, but probably a third of Essex is without fire hydrants, so we rely on that vehicle as a water supply. It carries 2,200 gallons of water. It has a portable tank that can be set up so we can dump water and then use one of the other engines to provide water to a fire. And the other vehicle we have is an aerial ladder, and that's what we're asking for the town's funding tonight to replace. It's a 1997 vehicle. We bought it used about 10 years ago. That carries various things besides aerial. It has an assortment of ground ladders, saws, lights, generators, and ventilation fans, a lot of other equipment that we can't carry on our smaller pieces. So for a typical fire response in the town of Essex, typically, it's two engines and a ladder. Your first engine would go into the fire scene, start attacking the fire. The second engine is a water supply, and the ladder is a vehicle that would go in, be used for ventilation, which is either cutting a hole in a roof or breaking out a window to let out the gas and the hot fumes out so we can get into the area to make a fire attack. The tanker is used in areas beyond the hydrant line. I'm sorry, it's hard to talk with glasses. So they would be the third vehicle out in cases beyond the water line, where that vehicle would now become the second engine. These responses are all consistent with the National Fire Protection Association's standards for responses, and also consistent with the ISO ratings for your insurance on your homes. The current truck is 26 years old, has a mileage of 72,000 miles, which is also 6,200 engine hours, which is the equivalent of 186,000 miles. The aerial ladder has been tested and has passed, but the pump has failed its test and is out of service. When we have mechanical replacement issues, simple replacements, parts such as even lens covers have been hard to find, we have to go on eBay and by chance, if we find that. Any critical failure of this vehicle will be problematic to repair. We are in the existing vehicle. Advances in technology and vehicle safety features necessitate periodic vehicle replacements to ensure firefighter safety. So when is the ladder used? Straightforward. Used on fires on upper accesses... Excuse me. Upper floors of homes, businesses, commercial structures, apartment buildings. We use it for chimney fires and victim rescues when a simple ground ladder won't work. And again, I spoke about ventilation. Ventilation is that process that the gases are released from the house so the fire crews can go inside and extinguish the fire. That proves effective. It decreases the damage to your house and the property loss. It also can be used in a situation where there's a larger fire and you're trying to protect an exposure. It has a large master stream that will keep that vehicle... Excuse me. Keep that water supply to protect other residences or businesses. So a typical vehicle apparatus response... Excuse me. Useful life is 20 to 25 years. This vehicle's 27 years. And also, an aerial is very important. It's important in placement for the right usage. Obviously, you need to be able to get it near a residence or a business to use it properly. Rural driveways we have here in Essex are often narrow, limiting the apparatus access. And if any kind of water supply lines are down the driveways, they're impossible to move, and the vehicle would never get in there. So that's why it's important that this vehicle is one of the first two vehicles into a scene. If it's not committed to a driveway or...
Thirty seconds, Dan.
Okay. So recent supply chains have caused the delivery of new ordered apparatus to take 12 to 24 months. We want to... We found it necessary to be proactive and begin the replacement process immediately. While we understand the fiscal challenges, the funding will be from the cash described with no impact on the tax rate. We continue to find other funding means, applying for and receiving $400,000 in grants over the last five years. The funding requested to replace our aerial. The members of the fire department appreciate your support.
Any other discussion?
Troy Scarborough, 10 De Soto Road. I move the previous question. Can we vote on this?
Yep. We're going to take a vote. All those in favor of Article 15, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds.
I move Article 18 to be considered before whatever one's next. 17? 16?
Is that two-thirds? Is that two-thirds moving? To move the order, I need the vote of the, two-thirds vote of the members here. So... All those in favor of moving Article 18 before 15, raise your card. Excuse me? I'm sorry, 16. Opposed? The motion passes. We will reconsider, we will consider 18 before 16. Article 18.
I, Ryan Madrigal, move that the town vote to transfer from fee, free cash to the sum of $263,126 to be used as a match to a state grant and/or state legislative earmark and/or private gift funds and/or existing town appropriations for the design and construction of decorative street lighting along Main Street and downtown Essex, including the purchase and installation of new streetlights and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion? Here? I don't, I wasn't sure. Go ahead, Julie.
Jody Harris, 21 R. Spring Street. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. This project has been on the books since 2009, well before my time, so these are not my streetlights. They're, they're being referred to as Jody's streetlights. We, um, the Strategic Planning Committee, Long-Term Planning Committee, in 2009, page from our website, a final design change order has been approved for the laying of the conduits to allow the electric wires for functional period design lighting along Main Street in the future. That was Mass DOT, uh, who installed the conduit in, in the sidewalks for an approximate value of $200,000. That was back in 2009. Long-Term Planning Committee, again, in October, coordinated design plan, historic reproduction, street lighting, landscaping, benches, plaques, and signs. Uh, we have the landscaping, we have the benches, we have the plaques. Uh, we are using, uh, the shipbuilding theme. We have 25 plaques in the basement of Town Hall that honor Essex-built ships. Thanks to Shelley Bradbury, who volunteered her time to help with the design and the patining of these brass plaques that will be embedded in front of these streetlights. These streetlights were part of a, um, program to help the downtown business district to, uh, create, uh, a better space for tourism and residents alike and to light a path where people often walk. In 2015 to 2020, the strategic plan, again, uh, wins a grant to spur improvements in decorative parking, that, streetlight, street lighting and other aesthetic improvement, uh, town land walk. In 2019, the Economic Development Plan, again, install street banners to look at the downtown mode events, improve downtown lighting, improve the lighting near the Town Hall. Uh, consider installing decorative or historic street lamps along Main Street. Uh, that was MAPC. And, again, the final, uh, Essex Strategic Plan that we are currently in, uh, which is, um, revised December 22, Goal 3, purchase and install historic streetlights, trees, plants, and hanging plants. Uh, these historic streetlights are being funded, uh, almost on a one-to-one match with grant funds and town money. We have the conduit in the street. We had 163, 160,000 dollar grant that came through Local Rapid Recovery Program. We had a $50,000 earmark from the state. We have wiring, uh, $50,000 worth of wiring sitting in Town Hall basement along, right beside those plaques. So, this is Phase 1 and Phase 2, the, um, downtown, our mixed-use downtown district that will enjoy the benefit of streetlights, hanging baskets, banners, and a story walk with our, honoring our historic ships. There were over 4,000 built in Essex. We're gonna honor the first 25. We worked in conjunction with the Essex Shipbuilding Museum. So, uh, after we completed, um, the Pocket Park restoration this summer, uh, with grant funding, we also, um, moved on to the streetlights. I just want to say that, um, this is our way of supporting businesses downtown and residents. Part of the ask of the town was .75 meals tax back in 2014. The meals tax collected to date is over $2 million. Just this year, we collected $273,000. That's $273,000. We're asking for $263,000. Most of that money can never hit the operating budget because the state doesn't allow it, because it's something that fluctuates. So, this is a direct correlation to how we, uh, enjoyed the meals tax from the restaurants, and it will, um, enhance the downtown area. Thanks, Dan.
Brian Grassler, 30 Choate. Uh, I had a question from moderator. Um, a few weeks ago at Finance Committee, I said I would ask this question, so I'm going to ask it. Uh, it's my understanding that to pause the program, there is a cost to pause the work. Uh, and I said I was going to ask what that dollar amount was. So, I'm kinda curious what that dollar amount is.
Thanks, Brian. I forgot. Um, no, I ran out of time. So, the, um, the grant was supposed to be expended by 12/31 of '23. Uh, that was their pause in work. Uh, we applied and they allowed us to extend the work until the spring so that we didn't install, you know, four-pronged things coming out of the sidewalk and then they would sit there all winter before we could actually get the poles and the lights.
So, right now, if we were to, if we were to vote no, or is there any other expenditure for voting no?
We would have to return $160,000 of grant money. And, just so the people know, we have, uh, enjoyed over almost $20 million in grant money over, since 2002. So, about a million dollars a year in grant money. When you take grant money and then you return it unused, your grant applications in the future sometimes are unfavorably looked at. So, our town uses a lot of grant money for a lot of things, including fire equipment, police. So, that's our issue.
So, but essentially, I think the question before us is, we could stop work, uh, and, and come back to it later theoretically, although we have to return the grant money, and, and, uh, that's, that's the question. Do we spend the $260,000 or do we stop work and it's zero dollars out of pocket? From general, from, from...
If we stopped work and didn't, and didn't fund this tonight, if we stopped work and did not fund this tonight, we would have to return the $160,000. We would not have that available. And the reason the price went up is, A, inflation, and B, uh, we were going to use Ipswich Electric so we wouldn't have to pay prevailing wage, and they no longer have the attrition, uh, the electrician on board. So, our price, uh, in a, you know, annual town meeting or two years from now is going to be a lot more than $263,000.
I'm gonna go over here and work my own back.
I thought Annie was first, but that's okay. Uh, Mike Dyer, Indian Rock Lane. My question, Mr. Moderator, is whether, uh, this lighting system would be downcast, uh, that is, uh, in accordance with dark-skY desires and standards. And my hope is that if we get these new lights, that some of those, uh, side-facing orange sodium lights downtown might disappear.
The lights that are being proposed are not dark, dark-skY compliant, to answer that question. And with respect to the sodium lights, any sodium lights that are still left in the town of Essex are actually being paid for by private individuals or properties along the road. The town already converted all of the streetlights that the town was responsible for to LED. So, if you see an LED, that's a town streetlight. If you see a sodium light or one of those big spotlights, those are actually being paid for by private, uh, private, um, citizens. And this, this, uh, project would not affect those.
If I may follow up, will, will at least be downcast lighting?
I, I think, Mike, what you're asking is, are they gonna be downcast? And the lights are in the top of the fixture, cast down, because they are historic replicas of what was here in the 1900s. We are given, uh, a picture from the Historic Commission, and we tried to match them, uh, exactly. So, the lights, the light bulb is on the top, downcast.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, I would hope that it's downcast lighting and that we're not throwing light up into the atmosphere, because, because that is one of the nice things about Essex. We, we don't do a lot of that. Thank you.
Ready? Annie Cameron, Pickering Street. Um, I just wanna say that we started this meeting with 2.4 million in free cash. Um, and in September, I heard the town leadership say that we are broke. We can't, you know, we're, we can't afford the school budget. But we can afford this, I guess. In the spring, uh, MERSD asked for a 289K override, while Essex Tech requested 56. Voters in Essex approved 2.675, 2,675 per student for 21 Essex Tech students and rejected a 584 per student increase for about 495 Essex students in the district. Um, at that May town meeting, and I don't know if Linda Osborne is here, um, she said, hey, you know, we have all this money reserves. Why can't we pay for the override out of reserves? It isn't good practice, Ben. I agree with you. But I don't know what to do at this point. I cannot believe that we're looking at... This is a luxury, and I, I think we need to put education before something like this. We have money in our reserves. I don't know why we're entertaining this in, when we're saying that we're broke. It, it's so, uh, it's disgusting to me. And I hope that you vote this down, because I, I can't believe we would do this and not pay for our schools.
I'm, I move the previous question.
Two people will be done. He's moving the question, so, okay.
We, we literally have four minutes until 11:00.
Okay, I, I can see the clock. You move the question. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye, or raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. All those in favor of Article 18, raise your card. All those opposed? No doubt. Need the tellers. Do we still have to tell? Hold the card high. Yeah, no, raise your card. Yes, this is, yeah, I'm sorry. I need a, I need a count, so all those in favor of Article 18, raise your card. I just need all the tellers. We got them? Good. You guys are all set. Middle's all set? Middle's all set? Guys, hold on. Okay, all those opposed, raise your card. The motion passes 67 to 58.
I'm, I move that we adjourn. I'm, uh, with the next meeting time is tomorrow at 6:45.
What? So, if, if that, wait, someone just asked, motion to adjourn, and that would be for tomorrow night? Um, if that happens, we have to go to another night. I think we have a good chance of wrapping this up tonight in a short matter, so... But I have to vote on that?
Discussion?
I have to vote. I don't think there's a...
Oh, no.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, raise your card. All those opposed? Doesn't pass. Article 16.
I'll read fast. I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to transfer from the Town Technology Fund the sum of $20,000 for the construction of a fiber-optic municipal area network extension between the Water Filtration Plant and the Centennial Grove and for the installation of wireless devices at Centennial Grove to facilitate electronic communication and security monitoring at the Centennial Grove, including design, installation, purchase of equipment and supplies, and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a sec? Discussion?
I move the previous motion.
Excuse me?
I move the previous question.
Nope, she's talking. She hasn't even talked about it. She, she made the motion. She's gonna speak to the motion.
This is so that we can install security cameras, uh, up at Centennial Grove. We've put a pretty big investment up there with, uh, Dan Mayer and the crew, uh, doing the, building the pavilion. Uh, we also need to protect the cottage, and we have a lot of, um, break-ins at the cottage, right?
Um, that is at the discretion of the, the Finance Committee. I understand that, but, um.
Okay. I get the message.
That used to mean last call for me, but.
Yeah. Um, I guess, I, I just think that, you know, what Guy was talking about earlier, there are funds available and I think if you say that you support education, let's put our money where our mouth is. And I think this is a reasonable request. It's not spending the money, it's putting in the School Apportionment Fund and it gives the school, the, the town a tool in the spring to fund our schools and we cannot afford to lose more people.
Further discussion?
Uh, Brian Gressler, 30 Choate. So we've heard some talk about what happened at the all-boards meeting, uh, in September. One of the things that I took away from that was that, uh, unlike last year where there was a mutual feeling amongst the towns that going to the super two-town meeting would be bad for our relationships, uh, the official position of the Manchester Boards at that all-boards meeting was that not only did they not support, uh, a, a budget increase that would allow Essex to stay at or under the levy limit, but they would, they would in fact support a two-town meeting to get to that point. I think we all agree that if it gets to that point and how that works and how a majority of the both towns, uh, would, would vote, that a higher budget would be passed at that point. That's something we want to avoid, uh, from a timing standpoint. It pushes, it pushes decisions into the summer. It's not good. So I think we, we are at a point where this is no longer about what budget we want. There is a bill coming, uh, and how are we going to pay for that bill? Is it going to be another override? Is it going to be a, a, you know, some kind of use of, of, of funds from, uh, you know, even though it's not good practice, short-term funds from reserves or stabilization or a combination of both? So we know it's coming. Let's be prepared for it. Let's vote for this so that we have a way out and some options down the road. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark Lindsey, 86 Southern. Just when the, just for information purposes, when the Finance Committee voted on this, it was a $15,000 ticket. Just saying that this has changed it from $15,000 to $200,000. That's all I have to say.
Yep, me again. Jody Harris, 21 R. Spring Street. I would recommend not to do this. The reason why is that you are tying the hands of school, potential school money, any school money, by putting it into a stabilization fund. A stabilization fund, you don't just vote the money out with a majority vote. It requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. Since we didn't have an override passed last year, you're going to have trouble getting that $2,000, $200,000 out of your stabilization fund. We funded $50,000 a couple of years ago thinking we were going to build a fund to , uh, help stabilize the school budget, but in retrospect, we realized that it was going to take more of a, a heavy lift in a vote to get that $50,000 out and use it and then it still will increase your taxes automatically the following year. And on top of that, you would need to vote another, so if it was 50, the 50 is already there and you'd have to vote another 50 just to be even for that next year. So I would recommend against this, uh, and, uh, handle the school budget as it comes. I think we need to figure out how to work together on this and I think that by doing this, we're just hogtying ourselves.
Ben, I think, I think, I don't know who got up first. Go ahead.
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street, also Chairperson of the MERSD School Committee. Um, I would support this for obvious reasons, I think, but since I, um, have the opportunity to share it, uh, the district growth, the assessment growth last year was 1.97% in the budget that we actually ended up passing. That's 1.97%. Historically, the trend is about 3.28%, predictable and stable across time. We know that Essex has, for the past five fiscal years, been feeling the pinch of an apportionment shift, started with a $38,000 ask which ballooned each year, um, ended in a really contentious override situation last year. We ended up doing a little of both, using some reserves, making some adjustments and getting some stability in the district. I'm in favor of this, not because using reserves for an operating budget is best practice. Having sat on the school committee in my fourth year now, I understand that. We are asked to do it every single year by our town and we've been doing it in order to bring down that, uh, bring down that bill during this apportionment spike. Um, but we're also considering 19 other options in addition to that operational audit, uh, suggestions that came out of that all-boards meeting for efficiencies and ways we can cut things down without reducing program scope. So we as a committee are taking on this work of doing so, of making sure that things are running as smoothly as they can. This would, having this would absolutely be a good faith effort. Jody's absolutely right. There's no guarantee that a two-thirds vote would be, um, forthcoming in the spring. I think it's a pretty good bet, though, if we have $250,000 to offset the apportionment issue. We are in the crisis right now. Now is the time when we have the apportionment crisis, not five years ago, not five years from now. Right now is the time. We have a lot of opportunity for free cash spending tonight, like Annie said, and I think that this would be a strong show of good faith effort moving forward. It's not a commitment to use it, it's a commitment to set it aside and then see the school committee and the district continuing to do the good work of bringing in a reasonable, responsible budget so that you have this option before you. Thank you.
Ben.
So I've been an advocate of the apportionment fund early on, just because we know that it fluctuates up and down. We are on the expensive side of apportionment. This has been going on for the last three to four years and based on the enrollment trend in the formula, it'll likely be continuing, at least for the next couple of years. Um, my concern is that $200,000 is a lot of additional funds. It leaves us with $550,000 in free cash, so, um, I, I just don't think it's fiscally prudent in that amount and so, uh, I welcome any other Finance Committee members to weigh in.
Annie.
Fiscally prudent and we just paid for streetlights and now we're going to pay for the other lights that are above them. I, I'm confused. Um, but let's talk about the district and how much it's used of its reserves. In 2023, 520K. Fiscal year 2022, 335. Fiscal year '21, 335. Fiscal year '20, 100K. This is a pattern for the district. I don't know why putting this money in a stabilization fund, yes, I know that it takes a two-thirds vote, but.
Twice, too.
I don't see a strategy. I see a lot of, you know, quick fixes and maybe not fixes, but I don't see a strategy and I'm hoping that this could be a strategy.
Okay. One more, one, done right here.
One, one last point. Jody Harris, 21 R. Spring Street. Uh, last year, $520,000 was committed from the district reserves to close the budget gap. Um, reported, uh, from Avi Urbis, the, um, Finance Manager, or soon to be not the Finance Manager, uh, it was reduced, that usage was reduced to $92,000, not the $520,000. And the school district actually, um, prepaid 2024 out-of-district placement tuitions with $2023, um, dollars. So again, I, they did commit the money, but they didn't actually need to use the money to close the gap. So I think this is premature. We have a budget problem, we need to figure it out. We somewhat know what the enrollment is, but we do have something we need to work on together collaboratively and I think locking up money in a reserve account that requires two-thirds vote and actually effectively works as free cash instead of an operating budget flow is not in taxpayers' best interest. You will get a surprise next year on your tax bill.
Okay, we're going to go to Article 20. All those in favor, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the amendment. So the amendment is to add 200,000 to the original 15,000 for the school apportionment. So all those in favor of amending Article 20 for adding 200,000, raise your card. All those opposed? The amendment fails. Back to the main, back to the main motion, Article 20, uh, which is for the 15,000 for street lighting. All those in favor of Article 20, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 21.
Hello. Quick. I Nicholas Ellis, move that Article 21 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 121, raise your card. All opposed? Postponed. Article 22.
I Nicholas Ellis, move that Article 22 be indefinitely postponed.
Second, anyone? All those postponement? All those opposed? Motion's postponed. Article 23, 23.
I Nicholas Ellis, move that the town vote to transfer from the, earning the sum of $50,000 to nine.
Second, is there a second?
repairs, upgrades, and/or replacements to any aspect of the municipal sewer system, including but not limited to replacement of grinder pumps and related equipment, being incidental thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
So we're in the midst of a program to replace old grinder pumps that have been a nightmare for the folks at W. Um, continue to fund the replacement of those pumps, replaced approximately 154 or so, bad microphone, sorry, uh, of 210 pumps. Uh, the hope is that the next 12 to 18 months will replace the remaining odd pumps. That's what this funding is for.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article 24.
I Nina McKinnon, move that Article 24 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 24, raise your card. All opposed? Motion is postponed. Article 25.
I Christopher Wolf, move the town vote. I Christopher Wolf, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $175,000 to be added to the town's other post-employment benefits, OPEB Trust Fund. Mr. Moderator, please note this is an amendment. It was originally 125.
Is there a second? Any, any discussion, Chris?
The, uh, we had 50,000 left over because the, uh, amount that was originally penciled in for the, uh, school fields and so this will get us closer to the 200,000 we try to do each year for retirement benefits.
All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article 26.
I Elvin Guero, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 wage and salary scale approved at the annual town meeting on May 1st, 2023 by adding two position titles, each with its own pay range as follows. Counsel on Aging Volunteer and Activity Coordinator, $18 to $20 an hour. Assistant Town Accountant, $40 to $45 an hour.
Is there a second? Discussion. All those in favor of Article 26, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article 27.
I Michael Flynn, move that the town vote to amend the following line items in the town fiscal year 2024 operating budget and to transfer from free cash the sum of $35,341 to increase or fund said amendments. Line item, Director Sal, Salary Library Department. Present value, $61,907. Proposed value, $78,767. An increase of $16,860. Police Chief Clerical Wage Police Department, $43,748 as the present value, $53,000 to a proposed value of $53,472, an increase of $9,724. Fire Clerical Wages Fire Department, present value of $11,515, proposed value $12,566, an increase of $1,051. Town Clerk Salary, Town Clerk Department, present value of $66,000.
Motion's postponed. Article twenty-three, twenty-three.
I Nicholas Ellis, move that the town vote to transfer from the town earning sum of $50,000 to nine-
Second, is there a second?
-constructs, repairs, upgrades, improvements, and/or replacements to any aspect of the municipal sewer system, including but not limited to replacement of grinder pumps and related equipment, thing incidental thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
So, we're in the midst of a program to replace old grinder pumps that have been nightmare for the folks at W. Continue to fund the replacement of those pumps, replace approximately 150 or so, bad microphone, sorry, of 210 pump, the hope is that the next twelve to eight months will replace the remaining odd pumps. That's what this funding for.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-three, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-four.
I Nina McKinnon, move that Article twenty-four be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article twenty-four, raise your card. All opposed? Motion is postponed. Article twenty-five.
I Christopher Wolf, move the town vote- I Christopher Wolf, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $175,000 to be added to the town's other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust fund. As a moderator, please note this is an amendment, it was originally 125.
Is there a second? Any, any discussion, Chris?
The, we had $50,000 left over because the amount that was originally penciled in for the school fields, and so this will get us closer to the $200,000 we try to do each year for retirement benefits.
All those in favor of Article twenty-five, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-six.
I Elvin Guajero, move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 wage and salary scale approved at the annual town meeting on May 1st, 2023, by adding two position titles, each with its own pay range as follows. Counsel on Aging Volunteer and Activity Coordinator, $18 to $20 an hour. Assistant Town Accountant, $40 to $45 an hour.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-six, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-seven.
I Michael Flynn, move that the town vote to amend the following line items in the town fiscal year 2024 operating budget, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $35,341 to increase or fund said amendments. Line item, Director Salary Library Department. Present value, $61,907. Proposed value, $78,767. An increase of $16,860. Police Chief Clerical Wage Police Department, $43,748 as the present value. $53,000 to a proposed value of $53,472, an increase of $9,724. Fire Clerical Wages Fire Department. Present value of $11,515. Proposed value, $12,566. An increase of $1,051. Town Clerk Salary. Town Clerk Department. Present value of $66,000. Proposed value of $71,706. An increase of $5,706. This is a long one. Volunteer, Volunteer and Activity Coordinator Wages Counsel on Aging. Present value zero. Proposed value 1,000. An increase of $1,000. Assistant Town Accountant, present value zero. Proposed value of 1,000. An increase of $1,000. For a total of, total increase of $35,341. And further, to transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $4,060 to the SRF loan dash DW dash two-two dash three-two fee line item in the Water Enterprise Fund budget.
Is there a second? Discussion?
A little bit, this is a little bit of housekeeping. There are some salaries that are budgeted at X, and with some changes in personnel, there have to be proposed changes in current values. So again, housekeeping, general housekeeping along the salary and wages area.
Brendan, am I typifying correctly?
Basically, as Brendan articulated, there were some retirements, paying out for vacation accruals and whatnot, is unforeseen but needs to be funded. One time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-eight.
I Josh Franklin, move that Article twenty-eight be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article twenty-eight, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty-nine.
I Ben Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,000 for unpaid bills from past fiscal years.
Is there a second? This requires a nine-tenths, practical unanimous, so, all those in favor of Article twenty-nine, raise your card. All those opposed? Passes. Motion to adjourn? Have a good night, thanks for sticking around.